Oh, ready is forever gonna change.
We already need to start taking people.
It started last year.
Years ago.
It's weird.
Yeah, right?
It's rotten.
So this is the crap.
Yes, there you go.
I'm happy, David.
You got me.
That'll be good.
We don't want to hear from you.
She says, can she make me out?
That's so good.
Sam, we got time for that.
Sam, we got time for that.
Yes, right?
I'll ask you, I'll ask you in a couple of months.
And then the winner's like, Holly, how are you? Good.
Okay, I'll give you some more time.
Sounds good. I think.
Okay, we're ready to go. Thank you, everyone, for coming to Spanish Fork Council Meeting, July 1st, 2025, in our beautiful council chambers in the Spanish Fork Library Complex. Appreciate everybody tuning in all over the world and here in person today, especially when it's the Fiesta Days. This is a fun one to be at. So thank you all for joining us. We'll get started like we always do in Spanish Fork with a prayer motivational message, followed by the pledge. I think Councilwoman Beck is assigned.
Yes, I have asked Lindsay Coffey to offer us a motivational thought and then the prayer. She is our incoming chair of our yesterday's executive committee. Thanks, Lindsay.
It's an honor to be here with you guys today. Thank you for this invitation. As we gather to celebrate the Fourth of July, let's honor the unsung hero, unsung patriots of the Revolutionary War, ordinary people who did extraordinary things with courage that helped birth our nation. Their stories woven together paint a vivid picture of patriotism, sacrifice, defiance and defiance against tyranny. Among them are Marinus Willet, Willett, Mary Ludwig Hayes, also known as Molly Pitcher, Nancy Hart, and Salem Poor, whose relentless spirit defended America's dream for freedom. Marinus Willett was a New York militia leader and was a beacon of resolve in the Mohawk Valley. In 1781, at the Battle of Johnstown, Willett led 400 patriots against a much larger British force. His bold tactics disrupted enemy supply lines and later at Sharon Springs. He pursued retreating foes, saving the frontier from devastation. His courage ensured that the patriot cause endured in a critical region, embodying the fierce determination to protect American soil. This same fire burned in Mary Ludwig Hayes, immortalized as Molly Pitcher. As the sweltering Battle of Monmouth in 1778, Mary carried water to parched soldiers, earning her nickname. When her husband and artilleryman, sorry, collapsed and died in battle, she seized his cannon, firing under enemy barrage. A cannonball tore through her skirt, yet she pressed on, her bravery symbolizing the unyielding spirit those who stepped in front of the fray to fight for liberty. Across Georgia, across the Georgia backcountry, Nancy Hart, a six-foot-tall frontierswoman, struck fear into British hearts. Known as warwoman to the Cherokee, she disguised herself as a man to infiltrate enemy camps, gathering vital intelligence. Legends tell of her holding British soldiers at gunpoint in her home after outwitting them with wine, showcasing her fierce loyalty to the patriot, oh, yeah, to the patriot cause and her willingness to risk all to defend her community. Salem Poor, an African-American soldier exemplified patriotism through sacrifice. Born enslaved, he bought his freedom and joined the Continental Army. At the Battle of Bunker Hill in 1775, Poor's marksmanship was so exceptional that 14 soldiers petitioned for his recognition, citing his gallantry. His fight for freedom was not just for himself, but for a nation, proving that valor knows no bounds and no race or status. These patriots, Willett's tactical genius, Hayes' battlefield bravery, Hart's fearless cunning, and Poor's selfless valor, wove a legacy of resilience. They were not generals or statesmen, but everyday Americans who answered their country's call. Their story, their stories challenge us to embody the same courage and commitment. Patriotism today means standing up for principles they fought for, liberty, justice, and unity. It's our responsibility to defend our nation, not just with arms, but with action, voting to protect democracy, speaking out against division, and fostering a society that honors their sacrifice. Like Willett, we must strategize to preserve our values. Like Hayes, stand firm in crisis. Like Hart, outsmart threats to our unity. And like Poor, fight for freedom for all. As we light fireworks and raise flags, let's commit to their legacy, ensuring that America they built on, that the America they built on, endures through our bold unwavering defense of its ideals. And may God continue to bless America.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Our gracious Heavenly Father, we are so grateful that we get to gather in this beautiful country and in this building today to meet as a community. We are grateful for the leadership that we have and also for the blessings that we have of freedom. We ask for thy protecting hand upon us and we pray that thou would please be with each and every one of us as we do our jobs and that we might do a job that is pleasing unto thee. Help us be mindful of those who are away from their families this season, protecting our country, that they might be watched over and protected. And please help us to be a beacon of hope and light and to create unity in our communities. We are grateful for the talents that was given each and every one of us and we pray for these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you. Will you please, please rise and join with me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Thank you, Lindsay, and thank you, Councilman Marshall. Takes us to items C on the agenda. We have a recognition tonight of an employee. I'm not sure who's going to lead that as I'm looking in the room. We're not seeing them. Okay, all right, all right. We'll, we'll honor this, this employee to a, at a future council meeting. It's your, it's your turn now, Mr. Pryor. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go to public comments now. Jack is our timekeeper. He'll put three minutes up on the clock here. So during public comments, please address the mayor and council for anything you'd like to address us. And please try to keep it to the three minutes. We'll let you know when it gets close. And if we need to talk after the meeting, we can certainly discuss things after, after council meeting as well.
That's me.
You, Mr. Pryor, you can come up. Yep, state your name so Tara gets it in the minutes, sir.
I forgot my hearing aids. Hey, y'all got letters, okay? 1% view. Go up Poplar Lane, beautiful trail. Take your family up, bike down or walk down, then imagine a block north, those massive power lines. All right, that's 1% of the issue. Seth was good enough to talk to me, just said, hey, unless it's a safety issue, we really can't do much. And I thought, aha, 52, a massive flood. 83, a massive flood. Two years ago, a flood, it did get on Lynn Hill, or not Lynn Hill's, Gell Howerson land, but if that was a, that was a favorable melt. Worst-case scenario, if there was a cold, 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 massive heat, it'd all be underwater there. So safety, write a letter to Rocky Mountain Power, say, you don't want to come here because we have a massive flood every 30, 40 years and you can't get in there if there's an emergency. Tell them to go on Highway 6 is the best route away. If not, find another one. I suggest Powerhouse Parkway. That's my spell. You got my letters, okay? Please. Part of the problem is they say, well, it's agriculture. Well, the reason it's agriculture is because you guys zoned it for it and, and no one can afford to put highways in for a five-acre lot. But we're thinking about it, okay? You, you need a place for multimillion-dollar homes. Please, that's the area, ultimate best place. And, and yes, plan your, your floodway, but make it the minimum width of a fairway. You'll need another golf course in 40, 50 years, okay? So have a, a river golf course there in the, the high flood zone. Anyway, until that's mitigated, like you've done down here in the city, it has no place for electric power lines. And that's your argument. And, and, and help us out and that'll help everybody. They shouldn't have those big lines in a flood. I'm done. No, I got 40 seconds. I'll go. Thanks. I'll tell you a historical, Andrew Pryor, when the flood, they would purposely cut big cottonwood trees so the floodwaters would come up on the fields and raise the field up. They were smart. All right, if there's a problem, let's do something about it, all right? We don't need those massive power poles, let's do something about it. They won't listen to me until the city does it and then we can do it. So anyway, three seconds. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, that takes us to council comments. We'll start council comments on, on this end. Councilman Took and end up on this end with Councilman Marshall.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I have got a couple of items this evening, but before I, I get to them, I'd like to give some time to our, our wonderful president of the Chamber of Commerce for Spanish Fork and Salem, Kathleen Levitt.
Thank you, Councilman Took. Just a few upcoming events from the chamber to let you know about. On July 9th at noon, we're having a ribbon cutting for John Byrd is a new member with Utah Health Insurance Advisors. On July 9th, we're also having a women in business paint night at the Tilted Kiln here in Spanish Fork from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., which will be a really fun activity for women in business. July 16th, we have a ribbon cutting for the Hive Real Estate Group at noon. They're opening up right now in the Mint's Old location, right there on Main Street, 295 North Main Street. And that's a tentative one, but we're hoping, shooting for July 16th. July 17th is our new networking lunch at the Hampton Inn. The Nebo School District will be catering for us. They're trying to get a catering program up and all of the proceeds for the Nebo School District catering are going to pay off unpaid school lunch balances. So it's a really fun program we're trying to support. And then July 29th, we have our leads and marketing workshop at noon in the Justice Center meeting room. And that's what we've got planned for July. Thanks so much, everyone.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thank you, Kathleen. Wonderful. So I had the opportunity to, to serve with the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors this last week with the Tabitha's Way 15 Year Celebration, their new location, just, just around the corner here from where we're at right now. And it was a really wonderful experience to see their new location, to see how they operate, to see just how amazing of an impact they make in our community and really in, you know, South Utah, Utah Valley. And so if you haven't had a chance to do that, I'd recommend they'll take in a tour and show you how they, that they operate. But it was just wonderful. I loved it and learning more about that process that makes our community so, so rich and wonderful. Also wanted to just thank the, the city for, I don't know if it's Parks and Rec or public service, maybe a little bit of both, but for repairing the, the trail on Poplar, speaking of Poplar Park, the walking trail going towards a golf course. They've recently, they're, they're still working on, I know they're still working on doing some restriping and some cleanup, but amazing. If you walk that trail, like my family does a couple of times a week, they've gone and they've taken out huge sections that just needed to be repaired for different reasons, roots from trees, you know, things that have kind of misshapen the, the trail. But anyway, they've made it wonderful and nice and it's just, I love how our city takes care of our things. And I just want to thank you for, 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 for doing that, especially in that area that needed it so, so greatly. And that is all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Took. Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot, but I do want to share and discuss a little bit about an email that we received, the council received from a resident. It's that time of year with the Fourth of July, with the 24th of July, where festivities are, are taking place and fireworks are being lit off. And this resident emailed with some concerns about fireworks, specifically asking, you know, with safety, safety reasons, with fires, with it being dry, with, with the animals that struggle with, with fireworks and other things. She was curious what the city could do as far as banning fireworks entirely in the city, in the community. And so it was interesting just to get her thoughts. I spoke with Chief Hales, our fire chief, and asked him, you know, his opinion, his thoughts. He shared and let us know that the city would not be able to do that, even if we wanted to, because of state law. State law requires that every city, they, they can, cities can decide where fireworks can be banned, but they have to provide at least a location for residents to go and light fireworks. And so we're not able to, and not, not saying that we would anyways, but cities not allowed because of state law to ban entirely the lighting of fireworks. So those of you that spent your thousands and thousands of dollars to explode fireworks at your neighborhood party have no fear, you'll still be able to do that. But I also want to make sure everybody's aware of the fire restrictions that the city has put in place. Jack, I don't know if you've got on the Facebook page, the map that shows where the restrictions are at. I think it's good to make sure the community knows where they shouldn't be lighting fireworks. We last, last week had an incident by the golf course where somebody lit a firework while driving down Powerhouse Road, threw it out their window and started the, the site on fire. And our firefighters had rushed out there, which they did a fantastic job of getting there fast and putting it out. But everywhere in red on this map, which is basically the bench areas above river bottoms, road, going into the canyon, anything up by the reservoir, please be smart and don't light fireworks where you're not supposed to. Also be aware of the days that you can light fireworks, two days prior to the Fourth and the day after. So July 2nd to the 5th and July 22nd to the 25th. Outside of that, please be respectful of your neighbors and your neighbor's pets and don't light fireworks. And also being on the animal shelter committee, I guess it's a good time to remind people to be responsible pet owners and please have your dogs and cats spayed and neutered. Thank you. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob.
That's your favorite thing.
Usually ask him to end the meeting with that.
Can we get him a new micro ball though? Yeah. And, and I guess that's, that is partly a reminder to people too, if you lose your, your animal during a couple, couple of wild nights, you know, they do sometimes end up down at the shelter.
Yeah, it's time, time of year where the shelter usually gets, gets quite a few extra animals down there. So yeah, if you lose one, make sure you check down at the animal shelter.
Thank you, Councilman Euler. Councilwoman Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent a couple of photos to Jack, so whatever ones he brings up first, I'll, I'll talk about. Oh, this one. I also went to Tabitha's Way 15th Anniversary and we all know Pete Hanson in the community. He's usually behind the camera. I caught him eating dinner. You can see his camera hanging off of him, always involved in all of our community events. And so I was happy to snap a picture. And then this is Ms. Utah South Valley, Cara Olson, and she has been very actively engaged with Tabitha's Way this year. And she was there helping people sign up to contribute monthly. So if you're able to in your family's finances to contribute to Tabitha's Way every month, even $5 a month helps feed families. So way to go, Cara. And right before Tabitha's Way, we stopped at the Utah State Firefighters Association Parade that our firefighters held, a big convention this last week. It was a smashing success and they spent a lot of time on that, so good job there. And then last Friday, our executive committee was able to get together and do interviews for SF-17. And so we had city employees, myself, our grand marshals, our executive committee, all interviewed, all things Fiesta Days. So for those of you who would like to hear more about Fiesta Days, everything will be in the magazine and I know our executive committee will be talking about that, but you can also catch everything on SF-17. And I think that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Marshall.
Just one thing, I have no comments for this time, but tomorrow I have a veterans council, so I will actually have council comments next time we meet. It's sort of odd.
No, that'll be great.
Move along.
We're excited to hear from you.
You seem so excited.
Okay, one, two things I've got first, Jack, I sent Jack some, some pictures that maybe I showed back in March with our friends down at the Krishna Temple Karoo and good, good folks down there that always put on a celebration a couple of days in March, welcoming Spring, that is one of the largest attended events that they, that they do across the nation for the Krishna Festival. And it was a good time catching up with, with him. And I don't know if I said this in March again, but he let me know that that was the, the first time an elected official has, has come to their event to welcome people to it since 30 years ago when Governor Herbert, then County Commissioner Herbert, was, was there to, to kind of the first inaugural year when they had the temple. Reason I'm showing you this is the, the great partners and the great people they are, even though this isn't in Spanish Fork City proper and it's not in Salem proper, it's, it's in the middle of our communities and located in the county. You may have seen the news where some vandalism was done in, in that temple and a sacred site for them, a, a place of gathering for decades now in our community, for people to just celebrate renewal. A terrible, you know, terrible tragedy to have it vandalized, to have it shot at. And so our, our hearts are with them and, and I know we're working with as many partners as we can, you know, it's not our jurisdiction to, to try to help solve issues there. But want to, want people to know, our residents to know, it's an important piece of South Utah County and, and I want the, the owners to know, I want the people that, that celebrate there and worship there to know that we stand in solidarity with them here in Spanish Fork as elected officials. And, and so, yeah, best of luck in finding who's responsible for that stuff uncalled for and unacceptable. Fiesta Days, we're going to talk a little bit about that today, is that right, Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
We're going to hand that over to you, but before I do, I know we've got these magazines, these are in your house, houses throughout the South Utah County, not just Spanish Fork, but further than that.
Spanish Fork and Salem.
And Salem. So these are in your, your mailboxes, if you haven't checked the mailbox, but had a good friend that dropped by one from 2006 and when he dropped it by, I was like, huh, like pride and progress a little bit. Like this is like 13 pages or something, I can't remember. And, and you can see, yeah, there's a few ads in here and stuff like that, right? And some of the businesses are still here, so yeah, you guys can check this out. But now 92 pages or something like that, you know, and, and many more events in Spanish Fork and, and many more businesses that want to be part of the advertising and everything else. And, and it seemed to go by quick because I remember this one. I didn't remember this size. Richard, you probably have one from, you know, 1996 or 86 or, yeah, I was gonna say, you have the first printed copy of Fiesta Days magazine, but, but it's come a long way and so is Fiesta Days. And I'm excited to, to obviously celebrate with all of you and, and hear from our committee tonight and, and the grand marshals and one of my favorite meetings and I know one of the favorite times for our whole city. So pride and progress. That's what I have. Now, before we go to 101 and get to the Fiesta Days festivities, we'll go to staff reports. Manager Perrins, do we have some staff reports from?
I don't think we have any staff reports today, Mayor. Not for this setting.
Okay, all right. Okay, so after staff reports, we are into 101. We have A, B, and C. 101 is a time for us to be instructed about some things, so you'll see some stuff on there that, that we're going to discuss. It's, it's not, not public hearing sections, but if anybody has any questions about these items, you can certainly catch up with us either after this meeting or somewhere in the future. But we're really excited to start with A and I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Beck, which is her portfolio is Fiesta Days and always has. I don't know, have you ever not had Fiesta Days since you've been a councilman?
No, but no one has volunteered, so.
You kind of set the bar too high.
I don't, Bronco's not going to let me go. No, let's invite the executive committee up to the podium. This is our 2025 Executive Committee. We have Mario and Valerie Benson. They are our chairs this year and our incoming chairs are Gary and Lindsay Coffey. We would like to excuse our outgoing chairs, Gara and Stephanie Anderson. They are out of town this week. And then we have our event, event planner, Emily Harriman with the city and our assistant Parks and Rec Director back there, Bronco Hunter. And this is the committee that starts meeting two weeks after Fiesta Days to start planning. And so I'm going to just turn it right over to you guys. Mario, you look ready.
I, I am ready, but I do have to say you all look very nice in your Fiesta Day attire.
Thank you, thank you.
And shirts are for sale at the Parks and Recreation Building. So if you need those or need more, get some of those.
Emily, hold those up so they know they're not getting a polo, they're getting the t-shirts.
Yep.
$10 to $15, depending on what size, right?
Yes. And then I have the honor of presenting to you our 2025 Fiesta Days Grand Marshals, Richard and Tamara Davis. Richard and Tamara have a deep-rooted love for their hometown, from attending local schools here and becoming high school sweethearts, to many years of coaching baseball and basketball and raising their four children here. They have always embraced opportunities to give back. Richard volunteered his time and expertise to help build the Spanish Fork Ballpark, served two terms on the Spanish Fork City Council and dedicated several years to the City Planning Commission. Together, Richard and Tamara now serve as Just Serve coordinators for the city, continuing their lifelong commitment to the community. They love seeing Spanish Fork come together in service and lifting others whenever the call comes. And with that, I would like to invite them up to the podium. We would like to thank them for their many, many years of service, lifelong service, and then to present you with these chairs to use during the festivities and the events, and we can't be more honored to have you.
We'll need someone to haul these around for us. Thank you very much. That's an honor. Thank you.
Richard, that's not very much coming from you. We expect that from Tamara, but.
You've had me talking the whole week. I don't know what else to say.
Do we need to put a three-minute timer up?
No.
To hear more from Richard, watch the SF-17 interview.
Well, I don't, you know, it's such an. Yes. And then I have the honor of presenting to you our twenty twenty-five Fiesta Days Grand Marshals, Richard and Tamara Davis. Richard and Tamara have a deep rooted love for their hometown, from attending local schools here and becoming high school sweethearts, to many years of coaching baseball and basketball and raising their four children here. They have always embraced opportunities to give back. Richard volunteered his time and expertise to help build the Spanish Fork Ballpark, served two terms on the Spanish Fork City Council, and dedicated several years to the City Planning Commission. Together, Richard and Tamara now serve as Just Serve coordinators for the city, continuing their lifelong commitment to the community. They love seeing Spanish Fork come together in service and lifting others whenever the call comes. And with that, I would like to invite them up to the podium. We would like to thank them for their many, many years of service, lifelong service. And then to present you with these chairs to use during the festivities and the events, and we can't be more honored to have you.
We'll need somebody to haul these around for us. Thank you very much. That's an honor. Thank you.
Richard, that's not very much coming from you. We expect that from Tamara, but.
You've had me talking the whole week. I don't know what else to say.
Do we need to put a three-minute timer up?
No.
To hear more from Richard, watch the SF seventeen interview.
Well, I don't, you know, it's such an honor just to live in Spanish Fork, you know. The people have been just so wonderful to grow up with, the opportunity to serve, the opportunity to have coaches and friends and teachers and people that we have grown up with that have taught us the values of life. Neighbors and friends and business people. I mean, what more can you get in a town, you know, that truly has been named Pride and Progress? I just, I don't, I don't have many more words to really say. I mean, I've, Tamara, get up here. I don't know why I'm here by myself. This is my, this is my better half. Anyway, I want you up here because she makes me look so good. I'm so old and wrinkled anymore. But isn't, but isn't it wonderful? I mean, honestly, our town is second to none. Anywhere you walk, if you walk main streets, you walk our cemeteries, you walk our ballparks, you walk anywhere you go, our businesses. Whatever you see, whatever you do, there's nothing better anywhere in this whole world. And the people you meet in Spanish Fork, I wish sometimes it was like the old days when we used to go down to the ballpark and we knew everybody. We'd go down to the grocery stores, we knew everybody. It's not like that anymore. But you know what? As you still do that, there's still those friendly smiles from people. And it's really easy to get to know people because they know they are loved here in Spanish Fork. They know they have a great community. It's safe to walk our sidewalks, to walk our streets, you know, because of our police departments and our fire departments, our emergency people. I could go on and on. It's just. And the other thing is, is because of the Fiesta Days, look at, look at the wonderful people that serve it. And, and now there's not a program any better than that. Thank you. Bob, shut up.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard and Tamara. And I, I could have opened these up to, to show you, but nineteen years removed, in, in two thousand and six, it was Paige, Ann and Paige Harrison that were the Grand Marshals. And so if you want to learn more about Richard and Tamara Davis, you can turn to page twenty-two and twenty-three in the, in the current magazine. And I would, I would, I would encourage you to do that. I don't know how it came about that the Grand Marshals in oh-six and, and in, in two thousand and twenty-five both kicked, you know, kicked my butt when I was, you know, misbehavin' as a, as a youth. Mr. Harrison, Assistant Principal, and, and Richard Davis, who I thought was just my uncle and, and would be, I'd be in trouble with him. But just goes to show you, again, we, we sure know how to pick them in Spanish Fork. And Councilman Davis, when he was up here helping with the Fiesta Days Committee, choose, choose those members. And, and there's no one more fitting to, to be honored this year than, than the Davises and Richard and Tamara. And all you've done for the city, this city is in your debt. And so it would be a fun year to, to celebrate you and your family and all the service you've given. It's a small token to, to try to give back and, and honor such a great family, such a great couple.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to hear the yahoo. Come on. What happened to that?
Richard.
Come on.
All right, guys. One, two, three. Yee-haw!
It was pretty weak.
It was pretty bad.
It was. You're right. You were solid.
Okay, so Fiesta Days, Igniting Traditions, Sparking Memories, two thousand and twenty-five. We encourage everybody to, to get out and it'll be here in a couple of weeks.
Also have the rodeo committee.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Let's also pause. I thought the executive committee was all going to talk about their favorite activity. Come on. No.
If you get out of that, that means you have another three-year tour. Okay.
Come on, you guys.
He's already at the podium.
Do I get the three-minute timer?
Yes.
You know, I, I would first like, I'd like to start off with thanking, one, the, the city, the community, all the volunteers and time and effort and support that is given to Fiesta Days. It has truly progressed into a destination event. And that is because of the, the strong and wonderful community that we have, like our Grand Marshals, Richard and Tamara, that give back to our community. And this year, I would like to bring up something new that has been added to Fiesta Days. On the eleventh and twelfth, we will have our first disc golf tournament as part of Fiesta Days. For those of you, really Fiesta Days has something for everyone. You can find something that you and your family will gravitate to and enjoy and, and, you know, get into our theme, which is Igniting Traditions, Sparking Memories. Build those traditions and memories with your loved ones and families. And for those of you that don't know, we have a wonderful disc golf course down by the river. Take advantage of everything that the city has provided. And so we're excited to have this on the eleventh and twelfth for the first year as part of Fiesta Days. So I'm excited about that. And I may or may not have registered myself, and we'll see how we do.
No, I registered him. So he's, he is competing. I, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. We, I did not realize, I mean, we knew the rodeo, the parade, the carnival, the big things. But now being part of this committee, there are a lot of activities. There are things going on pretty much the whole month of July. And, and he's right when he says there's something for everyone. There's something happening in this city that everyone should be able to find to enjoy. And we've really enjoyed the nights in the park and the, and it's gotten us out to so many more activities that we really enjoyed. But I think my favorite will always be the two fireworks shows. I love that we start with the pyromusical and, and it just keeps growing and growing, growing. I remember when it first started and it was just kind of a little thing that, and I don't know that it was even part of the city. But it's grown to be such a, such a neat event with the, with the bands and, and people playing. And then to finish it off with the fireworks, I think that just kind of sets our town apart, that we start and we end with, with a bang. So.
Well said. Well said. It wasn't until I got involved, and these guys kind of roped us in, and then I really roped him in to do this. I, I didn't realize there was so much going on, so I kind of feel silly admitting that in public. But here I am confessing my sins. I didn't know. And I have loved this journey. But one of the, my favorite things, well, she took the fireworks. He's going to talk about my other favorite thing. So, but I'm going to talk about the babies. I love the baby contest. Those pictures are so darn cute. So please, you know, if you haven't registered to have your babies be all dressed up and get pictures taken, please do that. It is so fun. And that is on Tuesday, the fifteenth, and it starts at three o'clock. And we've got fantastic volunteers, Angie Clayson, who heads that up. And yeah, I just love those cute little babies. So, hey, your turn.
So I'd like to highlight one of my favorite events is the flag retirement ceremony. If you've never been to that, it's an extremely humbling and patriotic event. It's an event where we have the Utah National Guard, we have scout troops. People in the community can all partake in giving our, our country's colors the respect it deserves and retiring the flag. So I, I encourage everybody to at least come and attend that. It's, it's a truly humbling event. So, thanks.
Very good.
Before you guys sit down, I just have a little token of my appreciation for Emily and Bronco and both of you. So Mario and Valerie, thank you. And then Coffees. Thank you for your service. This is not just July, this is all year. So thank you so much. And I know we'll all hang out for weeks on end. I'll give those to you. Yes, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, committee. Let's, everybody give this committee a round of applause. That's a lot of hours. Fun few weeks, and then they deserve a vacation to relax after, after the work that they put in. Okay, it's called the Fiesta Days Rodeo for, for a lot of reasons. But, but it's the rodeo, certainly the biggest rodeo in the state of Utah and known all over the nation. And so I'm excited to have our fairgrounds director, Mr. Nick Hanks, up here to talk to us about the, the largest rodeo, most. Excit-, yeah, Dale's got the yee-haw going. I've told people already, Nick, time and time again, that it's the, I don't know if you like when I say it's the Taylor Swift of rodeos, because that is, is different, you know, could get the wrong thing. Some people.
Garth Brooks. It's the Garth Brooks of rodeos.
Taylor Swift is coming? No, she's not coming. It's just that it sells out as fast as Taylor Swift concerts, is what I'm getting at.
There you go. The George Strait.
Okay, there you go. I'll, I'll go there.
We've been through this.
I know we have. That's why I said Garth Brooks. Garth Brooks sold out faster than George Strait.
Well, I want to invite Chris or anybody with our rodeo committee, Dale, that wants to come up.
Come on, Chris.
I can always use help with, with talking, so that's a great thing. Well, thank you for having us. I'm excited to be here. We have an awesome rodeo plan this year. We have some changes that I am super excited about. I think our committee is excited about. As you guys may know, probably know, we're going to five nights of rodeo. The last, since two thousand and nineteen, we've been having four nights of rodeo and one night of bull riding only. The bull riding has been great, but probably overwhelmingly I heard, oh, we like the bull riding, but we like all the events. We want to come when they do everything. So I think that's going to be a great change for us. One of the things that I'm the most excited about, we've had for a long time, our motorcycles, backflips, and they are a fan favorite. But we're changing it up a little bit this year. We have a guy named Bobby Kerr that trains wild Mustangs, probably more of a traditional rodeo act. We actually had him scheduled in two thousand and twenty-two, and due to some health issues, some things he was struggling with, he wasn't able to make it. He is a legend in the rodeo world. He's performed in Madison Square Garden, to Calgary, to every big rodeo there is. He's in the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame. I think he's getting kind of towards the end of his career. So it, it makes me excited that we're going to get him here at least one time before he hangs it up. So that'll be fun. I want to thank you guys for your support. The rodeo keeps growing and growing. And we couldn't do it without you guys. So thank you for that. Do you guys have anything you want to add?
Chris minds it.
Yep. So we have our Fiesta Days royalty, a couple of them here. We have our queen, Rachel Whitehead, and our second attendant, Hadley Davis. Our first attendant wasn't able to join us tonight, Isabel Lenty. But if you guys want to come up and say a few words, that would be awesome.
We're going to clap for them while they come up.
Hello, thank you for having us. So yes, I'm Rachel Whitehead. I'm here from Spanish Fork, Utah. This is my hometown rodeo. I grew up coming here. This rodeo raised me, and I'm so excited to represent as the rodeo queen.
Hi, I'm Hadley Davis. I'm from Genoa, Utah, and I'm super excited to be here.
A big, a big part of our rodeo is you gals making yourself available after the rodeo. So all the little girls that are, probably some young men too, that want to come shake your hand, maybe get your autograph or something. But after the rodeo, you're after the rodeo every night at the signing table, right, out there to meet the kids?
Yes, we'll be there with the bullfighters, the rodeo clown, everybody. Some cowboys will be there.
And tell us, what do you do during the rodeo? What are your responsibilities?
During the rodeo, we are super busy. We're running flags, we're pushing cows. During the beginning, you can, we'll be waving around the arena while they introduce us. But yeah, we'll be super busy mutton busting, go pick the little kids up off the ground, which is so fun. Sometimes they're crying, they got dirt in their eyes, whatever. But it's a good time.
Well, we appreciate you being here at the Fiesta Days Rodeo. We do see you, see you work. It is, you guys are going fast. You have good horses and you guys are good at your craft. Because coming around there that fast with flags and waving is, is, is a talent for sure. And then it's fun to see you pick up those little mutton busters and dust them off too. So thank you for all your hard work in a, in a couple of weeks. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks ladies.
All right, well, tickets available? No tickets available, right, Nick? Maybe onesie twosies on the website or something? Singles, so you might be able to find a dotted seat here and there, but nothing together anymore at our rodeo. Again, I, I give this caution every single year. It's a little bit of a broken record. But if you go online, you might be able to find some, some tickets from something different than sfcitytics.com. That's, that's our website. That's where we're selling tickets. So every year we get the emails and the texts, some people angry walking in the city, how could you charge a hundred dollars for a ticket? A fifty dollars for a ticket? We're not, we're not. Those tickets were, what were they, Nick? The best? Yeah, ten to twenty-two bucks is, is what it is to get into our rodeo. So if you're paying that from somewhere else, it's, it's somebody that bought tickets and is, is trying to resell it to you. So, and we try to control that as much as we can, right?
Well, yeah, we don't have actually much control over that. But Nick, is it fair to say that every once in a while, right before the rodeo starts, maybe hour or two before the rodeo starts, there might be a ticket or two that gets put out there? Because we do reserve some. Is that something you want to say publicly, or should we not let anybody know that?
Yes, but don't come to the fairgrounds. You can't buy them in person.
That's good.
But on the website, if we have some extra contestant tickets left, we reserve a certain amount for the contestants each night. If they don't use those, six forty-five, seven o'clock, we'll put those back on the website. It's pretty slim pickings. I mean, it might be twenty tickets, but if you're on the outside looking in, that's a good way to do it.
So if you hear somebody say, well, I bought my tickets the night of the rodeo, they were one of the lucky few that maybe got clicked there at that moment and, and they, they were put out. Otherwise, they, they were gone, was it April second?
Yeah, April second, they went on sale. And man, by noon, I think we put them on sale at nine AM, by noon, hardly two together.
Yeah, it cost a few milkshakes, but they, they were all gone.
I would say, you know, we never deal with traffic issues in Spanish Fork. There's never busy traffic on our main street at all. Saying that in complete, you know, jest. But the rodeo starts on a Saturday, on, on the nineteenth, and we skip Sunday, and then go Monday through Thursday. That south end of Main Street is just pretty tough during, during rodeo time. Rodeo is not just a night event either, but there's slack during the day. And with our partnership now throughout the state with the Days of Forty-seven Rodeo and Ogden's Pioneer Days, all the best cowboys and cowgirls, all the best contestants of pro rodeo are in the state of Utah, and they're coming through your city. So be patient. Means there's a lot of big rigs, a lot of, a lot of people pulling horses and, and, and different things throughout our, our community.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people walking across Main Street, crosswalks. One other thing I think's worth saying, we all get in the habit, we park where we park. Three or four years ago, the city built a new parking lot just south of the fairgrounds, I mean, directly south of the grandstand. The, the last year or two hasn't been clear full, and it, it's close and ideal to parking. You don't have to cross Main Street. So if you're not one of those people that have parked in the same place for twenty years, check that out. It's free and, and it'll get you really close, so.
Hey, Nick, hey, Nick, good question for you. With that new parking lot, how's the access coming in and out for people who might be questioning, hey, can I get?
So the, the main access is right there by Ream's Western Outfitters that comes in right off of Main Street. We also have another entrance just to the south of that, in between New Car Dealership, that I don't remember the name of, and Steve Regan. And, and we're currently working, we're also going to have an access out the back, straight to the east, that'll put you on River Bottoms Road, that I really think will be a game changer. Letting those people exit not off of Main Street, out on River Bottoms Road. I think that parking lot will empty really quickly. Even without that, last year, it was emptied in about ten or fifteen minutes. So, so I, I wouldn't hesitate to park there thinking you might get stuck in there. That it, it really is very prime parking.
I would say in, in this area, anybody that lives, for example, on the east, what we might call the east bench, certainly south of Canyon Road and perhaps even, or south of Highway six, perhaps even north of Highway six, parking in this lot, shooting up that back road, driving down River Bottoms Road and up fourteen hundred or seventeen hundred east, I think you, you'll be out of that parking lot at home in seven or eight minutes.
Yeah. If you scroll it up a little bit, the other way, sorry. So that road, right, to keep going a little more, right there, you've got access to Main Street. If you take that back road, take your first right, drop on the volunteer, and you're on Main Street.
At a light.
At a light, super easy.
Chief, do we have any policemen and women that will be helping during that time? Okay, okay. So public safety will be out in force. The Diamond Fork Riding Club will be there helping you, you park your vehicle and get it in the right place. And then they're, they're to help get you out safely as well. So yeah, I think, thanks for pointing that out, Nick. That's probably underutilized on the south end just because it's still relatively new for parking that was tough to get. But it's, it's the best place if you can. just because it's still relatively new for parking. It was tough to get, but it's, it's the best place if you can, if you can get to it.
It really is.
On the nights of rodeo.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
I might want to mention too, since you mentioned parking, if you are looking for tickets, we do have volunteer opportunities for you to come down and volunteer with the rodeo and earn yourself a ticket to the rodeo on the night that you volunteer. So look for, I believe Jack is on our website, on the, on the rodeo website.
Yeah, and we're, we'll be posting that publicly in a few days.
Yeah. So look for that if you're interested in, in helping to volunteer and get you a ticket that way.
That's a great idea.
You'll get directed from, from Dale's staff and the, and the riding club, the guys that are wearing the black vests and black hats, don't just open the chutes for the rodeo and, and, and help, help you get to your seats. But they're out there working hard, helping people park and, and they'll help the volunteers get where they need to be too. So you just have to be willing and, and, and we'll put you to work there. So.
For sure.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just so you know, Jesse and I were talking the other day, if it rains real hard, Jesse is down for a belly flop. Mark that down if you would, Nick.
Hey, I'll, I'll keep that in mind.
That's unfair. Jesse's not here and I have a feeling he doesn't know about this deal.
I'm one hundred percent sure.
That's usually when those things happen is when you're not here, right?
Years ago, has it been four years, three years now?
Four years now.
If you don't know what Shane's alluding to, four years ago, he rained, usually there's one night that just rains at the rodeo and that's what it is. See you, Chris. And, and that night.
I don't know that that was rain. That was something.
Yeah.
There was a lot of rain on top of other things.
You find it on, on SF CN seventeen YouTube page.
Is it really there?
There's a night where he does a belly flop in the middle of the arena.
It says clown, clown jumps into the arena.
That what it is?
It was you, so.
And it's you coming up. Wow. So you, search that YouTube. You're going to love it. Shane's got a mouthful. Night of the rodeo. It's pretty good. Okay. Thank you Fiesta Days. Thank you Chairman. Thank you the rodeo. We are super excited.
Glad it.
Best time of the year. And, and again, everybody be safe, respect everybody's, you know, everybody's property and, and, and the busyness that's going on in town. And have a great time partying with the Davises, the, the Grand Marshals. They, they certainly know how to party. They don't sleep for that week, I know. And, and neither will we. So we're excited to see everybody. Okay, we got BNC on one oh one as well. We got a Utah Lake Authority update. Yes.
That's me. Hi. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. I'm Luke Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of the Utah Lake Authority. I'm kind of on a tour, talking to all the cities in the valley, just letting them know what we're up to. And I can say from that tour that you guys are having a lot more fun than most of the cities. So that's good. Yeah.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yeah. No, it's, it's great to be here and to, to tell you of what we're working on at the authority. I don't know. Should I beep or what should I do for next slide?
You should have a clicker there.
Oh, I have a clicker. All right. I was, I was worried somebody else was going to have to guess.
Beep, beep, click.
Yeah. There we go. Thank you. So this is sort of the, the three areas of our mission as an organization. So the Utah Lake Authority, we were created a couple of years ago by the legislature. Prior to that, there was the Utah Lake Commission, which was an interlocal agency. But in 2022, the legislature created the Utah Lake Authority, gave us a little more money and as the name implies, a little more authority. And we have this three-part mission and you're going to have to excuse me, I have really bad allergies. It makes me lose my voice. The, this three-part mission here. So we work on the ecosystem of Utah Lake, trying to improve the health of that. We work on recreation, trying to create great recreation opportunities and access at Utah Lake. And also to make sure that we contribute to the communities, create value for the communities that surround the lake. Utah Lake is, is a little unique in that it is an urban lake. I don't know that people really think about it that way, but it really is. I, I'm a member of the North American Lake Management Society. Yes, that's a thing. And almost no one has a lake quite like Utah Lake. Most lakes tend to be managed, that are being managed professionally, tend to be fairly isolated. So Utah Lake is a huge lake surrounded by a lot of communities. And it makes us kind of unique and interesting in that, in that regard, and also contained entirely inside of one county. So that's fun too. So Utah Lake is the largest freshwater lake in the state of Utah. Obviously, there, it's, it's almost as big in terms of surface area as Lake Tahoe. But if you know anything about Lake Tahoe, it's like thirteen hundred feet deep. So a little bit different in terms of volume. But surface area, we're, we're comparable. What I want to talk about tonight is our efforts to try and move Utah Lake to a new healthy state. So I use this graph to kind of explain a somewhat complex idea within ecology, which is the idea of state shift in, in a lake. Or any ecosystem for that matter, but especially in a lake. So ecosystems, they try to, they aim for stability. They want to get to a stable place. They don't like a constant disruption. And so they can be stable in a good way, or they can be stable in a bad way. And, but one way or another, they're going to get to stability. So when the Mormon pioneers first arrived here, it was in one state, right? That pre-settlement place was where the ecosystem was. And we know that the water was much clearer, maybe not totally clear, but much clearer. It had a lot more native species in it than are there now. It had native mollusks. It had a lot of submerged vegetation. And that's how we found it. That was a stability that it arrived at over thousands of years, if not millions. And then people started to get fun ideas. Somebody was like, maybe we should put carp in there and see what happens. Maybe we should, you know, just dump sewage into the lake, right? A number of things were done that very quickly degraded the state of the ecosystem until it was sort of at its low point back in the nineteen sixties. And ever since then, we have, we, and when I say we, I want to be clear, I'm not just talking about the Utah Lake Authority, but state, federal agencies, local governments, a lot of different partners. We have been working on rolling that ball back up the next hill, right? Trying to find this next stable state that would be healthier, that would be clearer, that would provide greater value for our communities. So that's where we're at. We're trying, we, we've made a lot of progress and I'll talk through some of that here quickly. But this is our goal with, as the Utah Lake Authority is to find the new Utah Lake two point O, stable, healthy state. So one of the ways in which we've gone about this is getting rid of all those carp that somebody introduced long ago. For about thirteen years, we contracted out and hauled in massive amounts of carp, as you can see here. Over that time period, we removed about thirty million pounds of carp from the lake. Now we have moved on to, we're primarily using these high-tech traps that were designed by a professor at the University of Minnesota, where they've had success with some similar lakes and getting rid of carp. And they're great, but we will probably have to go back to the sort of sane netting, pulling carp out in massive numbers at some point soon. But we pulled out a lot of carp and that helped a lot. It increased the health of the native species. We've also removed fragmites in massive numbers. Fragmites unfortunately look pretty, so everybody like gets their family photos in front of them. But they're really bad, unfortunately. They're an invasive grass that sucks a lot of water out of the lake. So I'm working in partnership with Brian Steed, the Great Salt Lake Commissioner. We're working on a plan to sort of deal with fragmites system wide from the tributaries into Utah Lake on our end, up to the tributaries to Bear Lake, to deal with fragmites the whole system through. Because you can't just treat one area. But here at Utah Lake, we have successfully eliminated eighty percent of the fragmites, which is, that adds up to tens of thousands of acres of fragmites that have been eliminated. And we have just this past year moved to sort of phase two. So again, the lake is getting to a good place. We are now going out with large groups of volunteers and planting native and beneficial species in their place. And we've, this year we're putting in about fifty thousand plants. Last year was our first year, we did fifteen thousand and we'll, we'll hopefully continue to scale up from here. So anyway, all that is an indication that we're, we're on the right track, but getting over that last hump can be kind of tricky. And the other piece I wanted to talk about today was just partly how people can help, because I get that question a lot. And one of the things we did when, when I first took, took over this role eighteen months ago, was I wanted to get good data on how people think about Utah Lake, right? We have anecdotal data, but I wanted to do a really thorough study. So we did a lot of interviews and focus groups and we came away with things that I think we all knew already, but it's good to have them quantified. So one of those that came out of it was that the cleanliness and safety of the water at Utah Lake is a top concern for residents. And I think that's, makes a lot of sense. We, of course, operate unfortunately under a lot of mythology about Utah Lake. So people believe that they will basically die by looking at the water. And I'm trying, I'm trying to get them to go, actually, no, right? It's, it's not that bad. People are concerned about harmful algal blooms. And of course, you should be worried around harmful algal blooms. But the point I like to raise with people is no one, literally no one has ever died, no human being has ever died from harmful algal blooms. People die from something that's in lakes all the time and that's called water, right? We unfortunately had a death just last week on the lake. So yeah, wear, wear a safety vest, right? Be careful on the lake. But, you know, the, it, the, the risks at Utah Lake are not that different than they are at other lakes. But anyway, so how, how we want to, how we're looking to change things is to address some of these perceptions. Now, one of the things I have to fight about, fight against are these sorts of articles. So this is a blog article that gets recycled over and over again. I think it originally appeared in like twenty sixteen, but people, different people just copy and paste it and, and so it keeps getting recirculated. This article refers to Utah Lake as the dirtiest lake in the United States, which is incredibly annoying to me, right? It points out, right, at least eleven neighboring lakes in Castleberry, Florida contain some of the highest levels of lead among all lakes in America. But Utah Lake is the dirtiest lake? We don't have lead in Utah Lake, right? So, you know, how does that work out? And you have to kind of dig into the methodology, but what they are basing it on is the title for America's Dirtiest Lake goes to Utah Lake. It has an outstanding amount of TDS. Now, what is TDS? Is it a cancer-causing agent, right? Is it some sort of terrible bacteria? No, it stands for, I think I heard somebody say it, total dissolved solids. So there's literally dirt in it. Okay, there's, there's dirt in Utah Lake. Because we have a lot of silt that gets kicked up in the lake, but that's not the same thing as pollution. So that confusion, right? People call us the dirtiest lake when there are lakes and bodies of water out there that have really serious problems. And one of the problems we have is the confusion that people have between clear equals clean, which is not really true. This is a picture from the Cuyahoga in Ohio, which if you, it, it looks pretty clear and in a lot of places, the Cuyahoga is very clear. Now, if you know what the Cuyahoga is famous for, it's famous for catching on fire. Now, a body of water that can catch on fire, that's a dirty lake to me, right? That's what I'm worried about. Anytime water catches on fire, I have concerns and questions. And this is, this is why the Clean Water Act exists, because it caught on fire back in the sixties. But it's happened five times, including, this one's from like two years ago. So here it is on fire. Now, that water, I would say generally looks clearer than Utah Lake even here. But that doesn't mean it's safe and we have this like perception that goes along with that. Bear Lake has more pollution in it than Utah Lake. It's a very clear blue lake though. And so people go, that must be, that must be a clean lake, right? So we got to push against these ideas. We did this survey and, you know, I'm not going to go through all that. The thing to note is there on the left is Utah Lake. And you can see how much red and yellow there is on Utah Lake compared to other lakes. We asked people to sort of compare Utah Lake to other lakes in the state. And perceptions tells them that water quality is a really bad problem at Utah Lake. Whereas only two percent of people thought it was a problem at Bear Lake. And again, Bear Lake has more pollution issues than Utah Lake does. So you know, you can spread the good word that, that things are not quite as bad for Utah Lake as people perceive them. And this is a problem that we encounter a lot, that people listen to these stereotypes and then sort of pass, pay them forward. And that creates a big problem for us. There's a lot of data that goes behind this particular graph, but what works, how this works basically is we found that people, when they first move into Utah Valley, are excited about Utah Lake. They go, oh, great, a lake. That's terrific. Then they talk to their neighbors and the neighbors go, oh, no, you don't want to go there. That place is gross. And so their opinion goes down. And then a few years later, they actually have some sort of experience at the lake and they go, I don't know what they were talking about. This is great. Their opinion goes back up. The group on here that isn't represented that is the most interesting to me are people like me who were born here in Utah Valley and we have the lowest view of the lake, right? And we're also the ones most likely to, to tell other people that the lake is, is, is not an asset, but rather a deficit. I don't know. Have any of you seen our ads that are running? Thank you. Yeah, glad to hear it. So we've got ads running on social media, in movie theaters, during the coming attractions, on billboards, on TV right now. This is the first ever advertising campaign for Utah Lake and it's really focused. We have these fake European tourists visiting Utah Lake. But it is, it's a fun ad and it's doing really, really well, which we're glad about. But the idea is to sort of attack head on these, these misconceptions about the lake. A few things that came out of that study that I also wanted to talk about. It basically recommended, besides the marketing campaign, three main things. It said that we need better public education about the lake, we need better scientific collaboration, and we need to advance research on the lake. So those three things together equals sort of our big push right now, which is we're trying to create a Utah Lake Nature Center. It would be by the Linden Marina. We've got land for it. Senator Curtis, when he was Congressman Curtis, got us five million dollars for it, which we really appreciate. Then, of course, Congress failed to pass budget, so then that money went away. And now we're, we're going through that process again. Hopefully we will retrieve it. But that is our big push right now is getting this nature center in place so that we can address these three areas. There's a lot else going on, but those are the main things. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have that I may not have addressed here.
Any questions for Luke? This is your area, Councilman Marshall?
Thanks for coming, Luke. We appreciate this. It's been far too long not having you guys over here and give us a presentation. I know when I attended, when we were on the, when it was the board before.
Yeah.
It was, there's always activities that you're all doing around the lake that volunteers can come and, and participate in something. Do you have a schedule of that? So if our citizens want to participate?
Yeah, if you go on our website, which is utalake.gov, we have a listing of events. There's also a forum on there, like if you, if you're, say your employer wants to do a service activity, we can organize a whole planting or shoreline cleanup program. We work a lot with the Dedicated Hunter Program in Utah. We, it, people love us for it, people doing the Dedicated Hunter Program where they do service hours, that they get some advantages in getting licensed. That program, a lot of the opportunities are really far away from civilization and we're the one that's actually right here. So we love that program. They do great work and they help us keep the lake clean. It's, it's in, both of those things are a massive ongoing struggle, right? Fifty thousand plants. 50,000 plants that we're putting in the ground, we're really happy about that. But when you consider that we have about 10,000 acres that we need to plant, that's, it's not covering a lot. So, yeah, we love all the volunteer help we can get. We just finished the Utah Lake Festival, it went really well, had about 6,000 people attend. It's just a half-day event, and that's up, I don't know, it's about twice what it was last year. So we're really happy with how that's going. And, yeah, we got other events coming up, so utallake.gov.
Okay, thank you for that. The committee now, the authority is made up of 15 members?
Yes.
And those that have, those cities, municipalities that have access to the lake, around the lake, sort of rotate through that? When is the next opportunity for that rotation to happen?
Yeah, so the, the rotation comes up every two years. It's even-numbered years. So the next one will be in '26, so next year. The, the way the system works, Senator Brammer, who created the authority, he wanted to have, he didn't want to have like a 40-seat board. And so he sort of established X number of seats for cities that border on the lake, and then they can rotate out, as you, as you point out. So currently, I'm probably going to miss one, but we have Provo, Orem, Vineyard, Linden, Lehigh, Genoa, Saratoga Springs. I believe those are the seven, yeah, that's seven, I believe that's all the cities on there currently. I can't remember exactly which ones are up next year, but about half of that are up next year.
Okay.
Yep.
We recently annexed up to the lake.
Right.
Next to Springville, and so, we're looking forward to the opportunity to fit in that rotation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fit against us, so I appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you bet.
Luke, I've just got one quick question. I've wanted my entire life, this question, that is, in regards to Utah Lake, what kind of an impact did Geneva Steel have on it, all the decades that it was there? If you know, I'm just curious, like, how bad did that get to where it's at, or, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of things contributed to the decline of the lake. Kind of the thing that we use as our best measuring stick for how the lake is doing is the June sucker, which is sort of our last big native species in the lake. And it was endangered back in the 90s, there were only about 300 of them left in the lake. And so that was like really a scary point, and a lot of effort. We created the June sucker Recovery Implementation Program, a lot of different people put in money. And now we have a population that is somewhere around 200,000 of them in the lake. So the lake is doing much better. One of the interesting things, like the traces that we can find of Geneva that still exist in the lake, it is, the thing that it leaves behind that are potentially dangerous are PCBs. And you can find them in the silt at the bottom of the lake. But one of the benefits of Utah Lake is that that silt layer is kind of buried at this point, right? We are always re-silting. And it also is, it's calciferous, so it sort of fixes with calcium. So you only have this much on top that is loose, and then it's hard below that. It just sort of hardens as it goes. There's a theory that Utah Lake is like Lake Tahoe, it just has 1,300 feet of silt in it that is sort of glued there. But, yeah, I mean, the, the Geneva Steel definitely had an effect on the lake. We have had PCB advisories on some of the fish, like, don't eat too many catfish, for example, in a month, because of PCBs. We've done some recent testing, I cannot actually say how that testing has come out, but I can say that I'm happy, right? So I, things are improving, and that's kind of what we see. Pulling out all those carp, the carp really accumulate those PCBs in their system. So when we pull out a 40-year-old carp out of the lake, right, we just got rid of PCBs that had been in there for a while. So every, of those 30 million pounds of carp we pulled out, that was also doing a lot to remove the waste, whatever waste was still in the lake.
Wonderful, thanks.
Luke, what's your, from your roles on the authority, what's your opinion or view that there someday be a bridge that crosses and gets from Saratoga to Provo or Vineyard?
Yeah, I, I, this has been talked about a lot recently. I think some of the transportation dollars that came from the legislature this year. I have heard competing proposals, one more here at the south end of the lake, the middle, the north end of the lake, maybe two of those, maybe all three, or maybe not. We don't really have, we don't have an official opinion or stance on whether or not there should be a bridge. That's not, that's kind of above my pay grade, right? That's you guys and the legislature and so forth. But I think that whatever we do moving forward, there are plenty of ways we can do it so that it, it is compatible with improving the health of the lake. And so that's, that will be our main focus whenever, whatever happens that way, will be to make sure that we do it in a way that doesn't really negatively affect the health of the lake. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
We're in a little bit of a drought in Utah, but you're telling me that lake levels are, are high enough where people can go enjoy it and recreate?
Yeah, Utah Lake is actually, I mean, as far as the lake goes, its level is quite good. We have filled over the last two years and then some, to where we had to put a bunch of water into Great Salt Lake, which is terrific. And so, yeah, it's high enough to recreate in. And that is the other thing I would, I would mention about Utah Lake that I, that I see people not realizing. There's a lot of media focus on Great Salt Lake and the need to save Great Salt Lake. The fate of those two lakes is tied. It's not something that you can disentangle. So if Utah Lake dies, Great Salt Lake dies. So, you know, when we talk about Great Salt Lake, it's the last stop for the water. We got to worry about everything upstream from it before we, you know, worry about, in order to worry about Great Salt Lake, you have to worry about everything upstream from it. So that's also part of why we feel it's so important, why the legislature felt it was important to create our agency and focus on the health and the well-being and the future of Utah Lake.
Luke, I have to say that Provo Bay has never looked as good as it looks today.
Yeah.
It's one of those things, you drive by, you drive by it every single day, and you look out there, and you're like, what's different? You can see the water.
Right.
Right? The fragments are almost gone, or gone.
Yeah.
It looks really good, so I appreciate the effort that the authority and the commission before has done. It's, it's a, it's a better lake than it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, definitely, and the new sewer treatment plan, Provo, is going to contribute significantly to that as well, right? That helps with the health of Provo Bay in particular. So, yeah.
Very good.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate your presentation, thanks for taking our questions, too.
You bet.
And, yep, we appreciate that information, that's great information. Okay, takes us to item C on our 101 agenda, the Rocky Mountain Power, a large power line. I don't know who's introducing who's here from Rocky Mountain, is there any manager, parents?
Yeah, probably Rita will be one of the main spokespersons here, but it looks like she's brought a posse, a band. So Rita, why don't you, or Tammy, one of you take over and... Yeah, yeah, if you'd, yeah, you may approach the bench.
Yeah, that feels very official.
Chuck him.
I will say you may approach the bench, yes. Thank you so much, thanks for being here.
Would you tell me your names when you get up to speak?
Yes, we'll go through that just a second. Can you hear me okay? I can't hear myself very well, so. Can you hear me all right?
Eh.
No?
Get one of these to Tara.
Yes.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, it doesn't seem to be coming up.
Just Jack, what's going on?
It was tested.
To who?
You want to email it to Jack, and he can help walk you through it?
Sure, that's fine. What's your email?
You can send it to PIO, that's Spanish Fork, back up.
Okay.
Why do you suppose it's not working? Else do you do?
This is Seth's favorite part, when the technology doesn't work.
Yeah, least favorite part. Ask Jack. Jack, will you please double-check this? He's like, I'm on it, always good.
The worst, always. Austin, tell some jokes, let's go.
Yeah, this stuff would stress me out if I wasn't.
Oh, I know.
You get it on there, you can carry your machine that you can control.
Why not? His computer was just working.
Should we do consent items?
I didn't send it previously, I'm just about to now, sorry. It's a, the problem is that it's a very large file.
Yeah, that's why we didn't want to do this.
Oh, boy.
We also had some, a web map that we were hoping to be able to go through, which would require me to be hooked up to it, so. I think that was the idea.
Previous gentleman was hooked up to it correctly, right? Up there, that was his slides. Got one tech guy in the room back there.
I'll get her another shot here.
Can you act them out?
My gosh.
I know. This is my favorite part of every meeting, when the technology doesn't work. All of a sudden, there's like 25 technology people that have to help, right? No one knows what the problem is, but we all want to sit. Have you pushed that button?
Try Ctrl+Alt+Delete?
I'd make sure it was set up on the right.
Have you, have you restarted it lately?
Start, that's a restart.
Always number one.
All good answers when I ask. Oh, why, yes.
Do I need to call my father and have him come down here?
No. There's not, unfortunately. I do have C. Oh, there we go, we're in business.
Don't move.
Okay. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for having us this evening to go through this informational presentation of the Spanish Fork to Mercer 345 KV Transmission Line Project. My name is Rita Ruderman, I'm a consultant with Power Engineers. They're an engineering consulting firm in Salt Lake City. We've been brought on by Rocky Mountain Power to help with the siting, routing, and permitting of the Spanish Fork to Mercer project. I have several colleagues with me, Tammy Moody, she's the principal project manager for regulatory permitting and public outreach for Rocky Mountain Power. We have Richard Bardoskis, he's the project manager responsible for the development of the Spanish Fork to Mercer project. We have Austin Tripp right behind me, he's the project manager for land acquisition. And Dave Gelner is my colleague at Power Engineers, he's the senior planning project manager. So he's sort of the, he's the permitting guru. He's the guy we go to to help with our understanding codes for all of the jurisdictions in which we're responsible for crossing. So the, let's see if I can do this. Just going to use my computer. Okay, so the purpose of the, well, first I'd like to point out, you all have copies of the presentation. And following this presentation, if you ever have any questions or want clarification on your own, you can go to the website, which we shared on the first slide. You can also contact us, but it's an easy, it's an easy reach. Rocky Mountain Power is proposing to construct and operate a 345 KV Transmission Line that would run from the existing Spanish Fork substation just east of Spanish Fork to the Mercer Substation, which is located south of Eagle Mountain. Over the last two years, we've been working on a siting and routing study to identify the most reasonable and feasible routes to the community and within our data collection and research to understand, to determine the preferred route, which we'll discuss this evening. The need of the project, of course, is to improve reliability and efficiency for the existing system, to reduce the risk of outages and congestion. And it's also to increase capacity, so bringing in additional power resources onto the existing transmission line system. And it will also obviously contribute to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and decrease dependence on fossil fuels as a part of the renewable energy integration. This slide shows what the project physically looks like. Again, it's 345 KV. They will be steel monopole structures. At this time, we don't know if they will be galvanized or self-weathering steel. The length of the line is about 48 miles from point to point. There are no additional trans, or substations being built as a part of this project. The height of the monopoles range from about 90 to 135 feet, depending on the topography and what they may have to cross. And the span between the monopoles is 600 to 800 feet, again, depending on the topography and what the line may have to cross. And the right-of-way that will be sought through easement acquisition will be 125 feet, so 62 and a half feet on each side from the center of the pole, if that makes sense.
Not feet total, easement only?
Easement only. So this is, the map, this map represents the preferred route and our alternatives. At the end of this presentation, if there are questions about the route in general or any specific points, we can bring up our web map and go to those specific areas, and we have all of the resource data and additional information that we've collected to put on as layers to that map. But just briefly, again, since 2023, Rocky Mountain Power has been working on a siting study to determine the most feasible route for the Spanish Fork to Mercer Transmission Line. The preferred route is represented on this map in teal. I know it's not very easy to see with everything else on there, but it's that middle teal line. The siting study began with identifying a study area, which is represented with the black dashed line. Within the study area, hundreds of links were initially evaluated in order to form end-to-end route alternatives. Through 2023 and into 2024, the team narrowed these route options to those you see on the map now. The teal, again, identified as a preferred route. The yellow, green, and pink routes, which were considered but eliminated. The pink route, which runs to the south of the teal route, was considered feasible until meeting with several jurisdictions and stakeholders. In particular, in meeting with the city of Salem and D.R. Horton, it was determined that there wasn't enough physical space to place the route through the already under-construction D.R. Horton neighborhood because of where the houses had been designed to be placed and already gone through the process and approved, and they were breaking dirt. Additionally, outage constraints prevent us from co-locating on the transmission line that already exists along Powerhouse Road. So the Rocky Mountain Power 345 KV line can't be on the same pole as the line that runs along Powerhouse Road because of outage constraints associated. So if there's an, and Richard could speak in more detail about this, but both lines can't be taking out, taken out at the same time if there's an event, if that makes sense. And there's not enough physical space on Powerhouse Road to build another transmission line to the one that's already existing there. The yellow and green... The yellow and green lines that head north and kind of look like they go along Highway Six were, um, in, under consideration due to the Highway Six corridor. We consider that an opportunity when there's an existing linear feature to sort of, you know, place a transmission line alongside it. However, due to the constraints presented by the proximity of the highway and the railroad corridor and a high-pressure gas line, the route was ultimately eliminated from consideration. So again, physical constraints couldn't fit. Um, just for illustrative purposes, these next slides will show some visual simulations that we've done of what the line will look like after construction. So the first, um, visual simulation is, will be that point number one, looking toward West Mountain. And the second visual simulation is outside the Spanish Fork, um, substation. So this is the first simulation, and I, I can tell it's a little bit hard to see on this screen, but the existing condition is on, on the top. That's the top picture. And then the simulated conditions with what the line would look like along West Mountain is the second picture. And then this is looking toward the Spanish Fork substation. Um, again, the top picture is the existing conditions and the bottom is the simulated, um, conditions.
So before we move on, this before and after, you're showing one pole in the after condition?
No, that's, no. So that's why I, I mentioned it's a little bit hard to see. It, so it, it shows that the line is on the bottom picture. I don't know if you might be able to see it a little bit better on your printout, but it, yeah, it heads south up on the ridge. And then eventually it'll cross the road south of the, um, wind turbines. Yeah.
Gotcha. Alright, thanks.
Uh huh. Okay, so to go through our, um, compliance with state code and the public involvement that we've conducted so far is, um, Tammy Moody. She'll be going through the next slides.
That's advances yours?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, can you hear me? I'm not tall. This is, I feel like I have to get very close, um, in order for you to hear me. Um, so as mentioned, um, my job is to make sure that we're staying in compliance with permitting and, uh, state code as well as performing public outreach to ensure that members of the public have an opportunity to engage with us and ask questions and provide information about their properties and of course, any concerns that they may have regarding the project. So this project, um, it is, uh, it does fall in compliance with Utah State Code fifty-four eighteen, which does lay out a series of requirements that need to be met in order for us to begin any type of field study or permitting throughout the, the project. So we do have to meet certain requirements that mainly center around public outreach and engagement with, uh, local jurisdictions before we complete any of that field work or permitting. So, um, early in two thousand and twenty-four, uh, Rocky Mountain Power Pacific Corp. sent out notices of intent to each of the local jurisdictions as well as large stakeholders. That also includes, um, the Bureau of Land Management, the Bureau of Reclamation, um, and then of course, Department of Natural Resources, any large government agency, um, that should be notified about the project. We also sent out notices to landowners and stakeholders within five hundred feet of the center line of the preferred route to ensure that they had information of our intent to construct this project. It also covered what the purpose and need of the project was, gave a general idea of what schedule we were hoping to follow, the process that we needed to go through. And then, of course, gave information about the public outreach that we intended to, um, provide. Um, so in addition to the letters that were sent out to the local jurisdictions as well as the landowners, we also provided notification on the radio stations as well as in the Salt Lake Tribune, the Deseret News, and the Utah County Daily Herald. Let's see here. See if I can get used to your laptop. So as a part of the public outreach and engagement that the company plans for, um, we, starting in late two thousand and twenty-three, began having briefings with, uh, the government agencies, local utilities, and large developers that were along, um, our project area. Um, so some of our meetings in regards to local jurisdictions included Utah County, Mapleton, uh, Salem, Santaquin, Spanish Fork, um, Springville, Genola. I mean, we basically hit every single place on that list right there, um, as well as those local utilities. And then, of course, knowing that there were some large developments planned along our project route, we did reach out and meet with D R Horton, Edge Homes, and Modera to learn more about their developments. And of course, to inform them about our project and answer any concerns that they had regarding routing. Um, we then went on to meet with the Bureau of Reclamation and the Bureau of Land Management as our project does cross through their lands as well. Um, let's see, next slide. Okay, so continuing with public engagement, um, our company held a series of five open houses. Four of those open houses were in person and one was offered virtually. The in-person open houses were offered at several locations throughout the route to ensure that everybody had an opportunity to attend. And then, of course, we offered that virtual option because sometimes it isn't always easy for people to be able to attend in person. They have other commitments or jobs in the evening, et cetera. So that virtual open house option was offered. At the open house, um, the in-person open houses as well as the virtual open house provided a series of project boards that took you through the project from planning all the way through to construction and provided information about each element of the process that we go through in order to construct this project. It touched on the purpose and need of the project, um, as well as the factors that went into determining a preferred route. It talked about the steps that we would need to take as we go through permitting, what it means when we get to construction. And then, of course, there were additional boards that, um, just featured information that is general information that we get asked anytime, I touched nothing, um, anytime, you know, that we have a big project going through an area. So there was a lot of information that was offered to attendees. We also had large mapping stations with map books so that they could go over to these large tables, go through the map books and find their properties and see, you know, what the proximity was between the route and their property. A lot of times if their route was close, we also had G I S stations where they could sit down with staff and staff could zoom in on their properties and they could get, you know, kind of a deeper look, um, more detailed look as to what the proximity of their property was in conjunction with the preferred route. While they were sitting at the, the G I S stations, that also offered the opportunity for them to tell us about their properties. And that's a great opportunity for us because we get to learn a lot of things that we don't necessarily see when we're looking at mapping images or anything else. So we gathered a lot of information from those opportunities such as flood irrigation areas, um, new developments and structures that were placed on properties that we just could not see. And they were also able to make comments that directly tied into their parcels so that we were able to take that information back as a project team, evaluate what we had received, um, information that we weren't originally aware of. And it did lead to some minor adjustments being made along the route, simply because of that information that we were able to obtain in those meetings.
I've got a question for you, Tammy, if that's alright. And I think you kind of answered it. I just want to make sure. So with the map that you showed earlier that showed the preferred route and the alternates, was that, was that created and decided prior to the June eighteenth meeting, or did these meetings take place? And based on the information you got from these meetings, those preferred route and the alternates were created?
So we showed the preferred route and the alternate meeting, or the alternate routes at those meetings so that they could see. And then we, you know, provided information on how we came to the conclusion that this would be our preferred route. So that information was provided to them on how the preferred route came to light.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then for those that attended the virtual open house, um, obviously, there's not a G I S station for them to sit at. So, um, at the end of the, uh, virtual open house, we did direct them to our website, which has an interactive map on it. So they were able to go to the website. Um, on the interactive map, they could either type in their address or zoom in, find their property and see where it lies, um, in comparison to the preferred route. Um, and then they could also submit any comments or questions that they had. So we just wanted to make sure that there was, you know, several avenues for individuals to be able to take a look at the project, learn more about it, and then see where it lies in proximity to their properties. As it notes, we did have two hundred and sixty-eight total attendees. However, as mentioned, that virtual open house is available on our website. And so it continues to be viewed even today. Um, anyone can go to the website and watch the virtual open house and continue to submit comments and questions that they have regarding the project. We received phone calls. We've actually had individuals call us and invite us out to their properties. So we have had some one-on-ones with landowners to learn more about their properties and gather additional information, um, as it pertains to our route. So, um, at each of these open houses, not only, you know, did I note that we provide information, but we also gather information. And so we wanted to ensure that they had plenty of opportunities to make comments. Uh, we had staff standing in between each of the project boards so that there was opportunity to, you know, just communicate and engage and ask questions in person. But not everybody likes to verbally communicate, so we also just had comment cards placed throughout the, the rooms so that they could see a board. If it sparked a comment, they could write down the comment and then just submit that as well. Not everybody's comfortable talking in person, so we still wanted to make sure that we got their comments. As we gathered the comments, there were some common themes throughout all of them, so we've kind of noted them here. Um, one of the most common comments that we get was proximity of the transmission line to their properties. So as noted, they were able to go to the map books or to the G I S stations in order to really deep dive into what that proximity was. Um, there they were also able to ask questions if the line did cross their property on, you know, what an easement is, what right-of-way is, what that means to them, you know, what the value of that is. And, you know, what the process is that we go through in order to obtain those easements. There were also a lot of questions about the effects on livestock and agriculture as they pertain to the transmission lines and the proximity thereof. So most of the restraints that are put on what goes underneath the transmission line basically center around safety. There are restrictions on certain things like an erection of a home, a shed, a large flagpole, um, fast-growing trees, all because they create safety concerns underneath the lines. But livestock and agriculture still work underneath transmission lines and in those easements. As you drive around, you probably see that power lines cross golf courses, they cross parks, parking structures, agricultural fields. So the land underneath them is still usable. It's just not safe for a structure. Um, and then, of course, uh, Rita had touched on kind of the visuals of a transmission line, what those look like, what they'll look like when you're looking out your window up at the hillside. So those simulation boards were offered at each of the open houses as well as on the virtual open house so that they could get an idea of what they might see. And, um, there was obviously information about how that, uh, route was selected, which Rita had covered in her earlier discussion. Um, some of the themes that continued centered on the health and safety concerns related to the transmission lines. It was important for us that people get accurate education, educated information. So we did have a managing scientist attend our public open houses. And they answered the questions that centered around any health or safety concerns regarding proximity to transmission lines. Um, they answered questions and then they also offered additional resources. Those are also posted on our website as well, if anybody wants to follow up on what those are. Um, and then, of course, the potential environmental and wildlife impacts. So we do meet with, um, my goodness, I can't think all of this sudden. Um, we do meet with our environmental and biological groups, um, in order to mitigate, um, any of the concerns that center around potential impacts to wildlife or historical areas. So that brings us to our project milestones. Um, so we have completed our system planning analysis as well as our feasibility study. We have gone through our alternative route analysis and our public outreach and engagement, which of course, will continue throughout the life of the project. We have entered the permitting phase, meaning we have had our pre-application meetings with each of the jurisdictions um, and any other entities that we require to receive permitting from. And in just the next few weeks, we will be submitting our conditional use permit applications to Utah County as well as the town of Genola. Um, we are also, um, in the middle of our federal permitting with the Bureau of Land Management. And once those items are concluded and land acquisition is, uh, in the midst, we will begin our pre-construction with construction beginning in the middle of two thousand and twenty-six and the project concluding and being in service in early two thousand and twenty-eight. So with that, it brings us to the conclusion of our presentation on project information and public outreach. But as Rita mentioned, we do have our map that we're happy to pull up if you have some additional questions or, um, would like to take another look at that.
Yeah, you can go back to the map page, probably.
Um, if you guys have any questions for Tammy while I pull up the map, we can.
I'm not sure who this is for, but, um, Councilman Euler asked, when you went to the voting meetings in two thousand and twenty-four, you had the preferred alternative established at that point. Is that correct?
When we went to the open house meetings?
Yes, you had them.
Yes.
Since that point to today, has any feedback that you have gotten, received, have you made an adjustment to the alternative?
Yes, we have made minor adjustments to the alternative.
What do those look like? Just curious to.
We can go through those.
Okay, alright, that'd be, that'd be awesome. And I'm in a business where we do linear systems all the time. And when we do, I do highway stuff, um, we have to interact with drainage, um, districts all the time. Have you had a conversation with drainage districts along this route at all?
We, those conversations will continue as we, um, meet with landowners about easement acquisitions, since they're sort of not one major, um, body for across, we want to make sure that we're talking to the appropriate, you know, judges and canals and et cetera.
Okay.
Does that answer that question?
Yeah, so you, you're planning, you have not yet had that conversation with them, but you're planning to have a conversation with the.
No, we, I mean, there are canal companies that we've met with, um, the, I'm, I don't know the, I'm sorry, I don't know the name off the top of my head, but the one along eighty-eight hundred south, for example, we've spoken with them. Who else, Richard? Strawberry.
Is it the Benjamin, Benjamin Drainage?
Benjamin? Their heart, I mean, I don't expect you to roll them off your tongue today. I'm just curious if, if that's part of the process.
Yeah.
So I think the eighty-eight hundred south, is that the Benjamin Drainage District, or is that a different one that you're thinking of?
Probably west, yeah.
West, yeah.
Yes, you're talking about the canal companies out there.
Yeah.
That is a, okay, yeah, that's a important part of the process, though, and will continue through the entirety of our conversations with landowners.
Okay. So at this point, you've not, now that you've got a preferred route, or it sounds like you've had a preferred route for, for a little while, well, over a year, you've not contacted, at this point, all of the property owners along the preferred route, but you will do that as you move forward?
Correct. So in the, in the, you know, tradition. Correct. So in the, in the, you know, traditional timeline of a project, we're pursuing our permits. But we will be kicking off those conversations with landowners for easement acquisitions in the next few weeks.
So there's a.
In parallel.
High probability that many of the landowners that you'll be contacting have no idea about this.
Yeah, we're, we are aware that there will be landowners who didn't, you know, pay attention to or get, you know, lost in the mail, whatever, the mailers, et cetera, and did not appear at the open houses. That's always a risk. It's always a possibility of a project this size. So we're, we're absolutely aware that we'll encounter landowners who haven't heard about the project.
On that note, looking at your preferred line, obviously, six to eight hundred feet, you're, you're crossing over quite a bit of farmland to get from one destination to the other.
Correct.
A big, a big part of farming is to be able to plant in straight lines to be effective. When you're not planting in a straight line and you have to move out of that line, it's, it's less productive, it's less yield, you're not going to make as much. Obviously, putting a pole in the middle of a farm field, every six to eight hundred feet is going to affect those lines. What does Rocky Mountain Power do, or how do you guys make sure to either reimburse or to make sure that those farmers are compensated for, for the yield going down because of the lines that'll be in their fields?
So yes, we do cross a lot of farmland on the project, and we're aware of the sensitivity to agricultural production and how important it is, especially in areas like this. Rocky Mountain Power will enter into, you know, one-on-one easement acquisition negoti- negotiations with each landowner. And the pay, the placement of poles on specific property will never be, wherever we can, we will not be bisecting fields. If there's a pivot irrigation system, most times you can span it with the height of the poles and not interrupt the pivot itself. For drip irrigation systems, there's ways to stay on the very edge of the field and sometimes with a double overhang so that you're not encroaching further into the field. But in short, Rocky Mountain Power will do everything that they can to limit the impact of the infrastructure to the agricultural productions. In addition, and Austin, you can interject, you know, whenever, but the, the easements themselves are written, you know, according to certain mitigation efforts that Rocky Mountain Power would adhere to on a landowner-to-landowner basis. So accommodating, you know, verticality for wells, you know, verticality maintenance that's required for certain wells and that type of thing, making sure that's written in.
So you would sit down with each individual property owner?
Yes.
Have a conversation about what they're doing today, where your poles could potentially be, adjusting them if possible as needed, and then mitigating that impact through some sort of compensation or whatever it might be through that easement document. Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
As you're kind of seeing on the map here.
Austin, you gotta come up.
This guy, this guy'll yell at us that you're not at the mic, the recording guy, mean back there.
So looking at the map here, you see a lot of straight lines going through some of these agricultural fields. As we approach every one of these individual landowners, we will be working with them to microsite where the pole locations are actually going to be on their property to hopefully not impact, like if you're looking to that far east side or the right side of the page, where it looks like we're kind of bisecting, we might be able to just kind of square that up to where it's easier to still go in and do the agricultural activities.
Does that include? I don't know how it could, but let's say you've got a farm, farm owner who potentially at some point in the future wanted to develop that farm. Now that limits the number of units they can put on their property. How, how do you mitigate, or how, what does that look like?
That's a, that's a tricky topic because we can only route around what is real. Not to minimize a dream or what, what people hope to do with their properties or plan into the future. But if they're, if, if a development hasn't gone through the process and isn't, you know, platted on a piece of paper essentially with the jurisdiction in which it would need approval, then it, there's, you know, yeah.
It will likely devalue their property in, as far as future development, but that's not your concern. That's nothing you guys can do at this point because there's no real value during the project period.
I wouldn't say that it isn't a concern. You know, we would, again, microsite to the extent possible around what, what the landowner would like us to do. Whether it's for a future develop, like if you can stay on the edge of my parcel because I want to sell this, you know, to a future developer and get the most bang for my buck and to add the most density, that's something that we would entertain. As far as devaluing property, that's a, that's a really subjective conversation. Again, you know, there's developments all over the country that go right up to a right-of-way transmission line. So it's hard to, it's hard to say, yes, it will.
Yeah, I can understand that. How do you guys approach a property owner that flat out does not want this on his property?
I mean, we work with them to the best of our abilities. Obviously, there is the condemnation route, but that is the absolute last resort for us. We, that's something we don't want to, that's a road we don't want to go down. So we will do months upon months of negotiation with landowners to try to get the proper compensation that they need for their, or for the easement. And, you know, like I said, last resort is the condemnation route, which we prefer not to go down.
Austin, while you're up, I've got a question for you. With you being over land acquisition, looking at the alternative routes compared to the preferred route, any idea what the dollar amount as far as land acquisition, the difference between this route and maybe specifically the route to the south that goes along eighty-eight-hundred?
As far as total costs of easements?
Yeah.
I don't think, so I don't have that number off the top of my head, and I don't know if we would have that present.
Well, it's a tough, it's a tough question to answer because it's, we didn't choose the teal route because of cost. It's because of physical constraints. So we physically can't fit.
Because of the other line that you mentioned?
Because of, well, yes, we can't co-locate on the line that goes along Powerhouse Road. And then the existing developments that are already, you know, halfway done at this point, we physically can't fit within there. So it's, it's a hard, it's hard to quantify that.
That's where my question starts to come in, and it's, it's more, more west as you get closer to I-15 on, on eight thousand south there. Yeah, that, that part right there, when we start becoming aware of this and, and start having input as a city, it's a tough spot. That, that's all on the north side, you know, that's where we split with Salem on the south and us on the north, and it's on the north side of our property. I know, speak to some options of what we tried to discuss earlier was, and, and maybe you can provide some insight to here, but I think you're alluding to developments that aren't in currently there versus other places where developments are in or platted and approved. And so, so maybe we'd have a fighting shot if things were built there. But why, why can't you go down the middle of the road there?
So the middle of the road is a, first, a safety and maintenance concern. These are very large structures that would be in the middle of a road. So the physical, the physical requirements in order, that would need to be built in order to accommodate left-hand turns, for example, are pretty cost prohibitive and a, a no from UDOT. The, there's the liability concerns because of the safety can, the safety hazard, basically, that the structure of that size would present. And the, the ability for Rocky Mountain Power to maintain a line in the case of an outage is paramount. And if they were going to need to, you know, if there was an outage and they needed to address this, that area of the line, they would need to be able to do it immediately, which would require closing that road until the, the issue was resolved. So however many times that's needed to happen, whenever it's needed to happen. So for UDOT and Rocky Mountain Power, that idea isn't, isn't something that's feasible.
And am I, am I on the right path to say the reason why it's on the north instead of the south is because there's some south development and developments in process that make it harder to be on the south side than the north side?
They are further along, so the, the structure is going up. There's also a transmission line on the south side that we would not be able to co-locate on. So the physical constraints that exist presently on the south side prevent the transmission line from being able to be built on that side of the road.
Don't worry about it.
We have been.
We got it.
We have been meeting with Modera. We have a great working relationship with them on redeveloping their site plan. We understand that's a process. We've been meeting with Seth frequently about it. But we are, you know, it's, it's a, it's an unfortunate situation based on who's there first, but it's, it's a principle in citing what's existing, what's not.
Gotcha.
Rita, we had a resident in our public comments tonight. I don't know if you guys were in the room or if you were still outside, but he, I believe he's a property owner in River Bottoms. He expressed concerns about the, the flood every now and then, every so many years. Historically, the River Bottoms is flooded. Any concerns of, have you guys discussed, or has Rocky Mountain had any concerns about similar thing? You talk about maintenance inside, safety issues with it being in the middle of the road. Are there any safety concerns or issues concerning maintenance if there's a major flood and you can't access it in the River Bottoms?
Richard can probably answer this in more detail based on experience.
Yeah, so I'm Richard Barnauskas. But yeah, so yeah, obviously, like if we can get it to a point where it's accessible and maintainable year-round, that's ideal. But we're also going up over the top of West Mountain. We're going along the ridge, you know, coming up over, you know, the reservoir there. We're going kind of through the lower part of Utah Lake where it's, we know it's going to be, you know, difficult to access. But no, it's a, we, there are spots obviously there that we want to access, you know, year-round, but there's, you know, other ways that we can get access to these. The, the difference between getting access to those areas and compared to going down a, a major road is that we're able to, to take that area and either work it from helicopters and we're not worried about, you know, dropping conductor on the, on the road and impacting safety to, to the public. You know, the difference, you know, those are kind of the main differences there. We're able to maintain, we're able to get out to most anything. You know, with just a little bit of willpower and some, you know, some funding, right, to, to get out to these places. But those are mostly typically places that don't have, aren't typically traveled and aren't causing public safety concerns.
The, the line along Provo Bay is almost submerged all the time, right? So you're, you're able to access that on?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not super familiar with all the other ones. I'm, I'm kind of that project guy that just focuses on what they're doing, right?
Sure, sure, sure.
But no, it's a.
You don't have to own them, you just have to build them.
Right, yeah.
But that would be the same size of line you're talking about, like that's out by Sleepy Ridge Golf Course, between Sleepy Ridge and the lake. It's got to be the same.
They're big pulls.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Steve. So definitely this, a power line like this crosses a road all over the place, right? You're not afraid to cross a road. But going down the center of a road, do you have, does Rocky Mountain have a power line that is, there's a lot of parallel to a road, but do, do you have one that goes down a road?
No. I, I know I used to work for XL Energy in Colorado, and that's not something they would entertain.
And UDOT's concern was, I mean, the, the left turns you could accommodate, it's at six hundred to eight hundred foot spans, you could figure that out. But their concerns, what primarily were, what, your access to the system?
Our access and then safety.
There's a big pool in the road?
Yeah.
But, okay, that's fair. But there's not a power vehicle concern? There's not a safety concern having power above vehicles, though?
No, you can have parking lots, people drive under, I mean, you drive under them all the time.
So it's the physical presence of pulls in the road?
Correct.
Okay. All right, you think it's some creative permitting folks over there could figure this out?
Left turn complex visibility in the oncoming direction. But then it's also the additional cost to be able to put a transmission line in the center of the road because then you're widening it. More than likely, you're going to need to put barrier.
Sure.
On each side of it, which means we'd have to close lanes of the highway in order to maintain anything on that transmission line. So we would be the ones that would bear majority of the cost since it's for our transmission power line to go down the center of the road. And ultimately, that cost gets passed down to everyone that pays their power bill. So it makes more sense to be on one side of the road or the other, but obviously, we selected the north side of the road. It's a lot cheaper to do that than it would be to go down the center of the road.
We wouldn't be pushing you if you picked the north, the south side.
We'd be fine with it.
And I think.
Yeah, we got it.
We got it, Kevin.
Commercial is going to kill your commercials for your only exit.
We got it. There will be public hearings for that, and it's coming in the future.
Right. From our point of view, we're given, you know, we're asking the questions that our citizens have asked us. It's not a Spanish, it's not a Spanish Fork City project. And it's kind of fun for, for the first time in my career to be on this side of things and not standing where you are and having to ask these questions. But it is, it's important, right? It's a big, it's an impact to our citizens, and we want to make sure that we understand the decision-making that goes through this. And I would love to see where public input has changed the outcome. If you could show us a few of those spots and, and why did that public input change that outcome?
So we are actually really close to when.
It was going south, but someone said go north?
No. I mean, Salem, of course, had questions, but.
Sure.
This area right here, we were a little bit further east. But in speaking with the landowners here and what they have, you know, coming imminently, and because it was an easy accommodation, we were able to, you know, it didn't, it didn't particularly impact us if we, they weren't asking us to like, you know, come up this road and come back down. We were able to shift the line a little bit further west in order to make more room here, which made the circle of the landowners down here equally happy.
So when a request came in, if it was feasible, it was on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the request to go south is not feasible because of the issues you've talked about?
Yes, and when you say south, you mean that pink line, correct?
No, I mean the south side of one-sixty-four.
Oh, yeah, that's because, because of the physical.
Adjusted a little bit.
Yeah, I only want, I only want like fifty feet for three miles.
Yeah. It's not feasible because of what they've already had built, have built.
And your definition of feasible is physically?
The physical constraints.
Okay, all right.
Rita, let.
Oh, go ahead.
Let me ask another question, if you don't mind zooming out and showing the full project.
Sure.
So this is connecting the Spanish Fork Substation with the Mercer Substation, right?
Correct.
I guess walk me through why this specific connection, why it has to come from Spanish Fork and why it couldn't come from another substation either up north or further to the west? Why is the Spanish Fork Substation the one that's connecting these?
Yeah, so I'm going to do my best to be the transmission planner, even though, you know, so I'm just going to kind of regurgitate as best I know here. Oh, yeah, sorry. So basically, a lot of the power generation is coming from southern Utah coming up, you know, into Spanish Fork Substation. So that's one of our big key critical substations in the area. And basically tying that to Mercer Substation, which has a tie up to our Camp Williams, our Oker, our, you know, everything up into the Salt Lake County and around. It basically is between these, it basically creates a, another loop and a hub there where we can have powered flow coming through between Utah County, Salt Lake County, southern Utah, and basically out all the way from Wyoming into Salt Lake County and down and around. So there's existing lines that go from Spanish Fork up to Camp Williams Substation, kind of, you know, around the Camp Williams Military Base. But then this one basically allows a separate connection in there, or separate route there to allow for additional power flow. And also just because of federal regulations, we have to model things differently. If one line goes out, what does that do to the other lines? And so if you have one of those go out, then these, the existing lines might be overloaded with the future generation and future load demands that are coming into the area. So basically, it's just tying a, a loop in there and allowing for more generation to come online to feed the load that we have in the area that ultimately feeds, you know, other municipal districts like Spanish Fork Power and, and just all the other loads that are coming on in the area.
This line more or less, if I got that. This line more or less, if I got that right, is a redundancy plan?
It also allows for additional load to come on because right now our lines that are currently in place can't allow, won't allow for the generation to come online because they're already maxed out. So I mean, we've got.
It's increasing your load as well. So redundancy and increased load.
Yeah, it's, it's, this line will allow, I think it was like, the current plan right now is like 1,600 megawatts a generation to come online, which is a lot of load that is available now to, to the communities in the area. So hopefully that makes sense.
That's the same, I guess, question I was going to ask was, it's tough for, you know, Spanish Fork. We say we get our power from Spanish Fork City and from UMPA, our power partners, but you're our power partner too because that's how it gets delivered to our substations and everything else. So I remember in, in a couple of your meetings about the redundancy, how we put redundancy in our water systems, but we worry about how that surrounds our whole city. And this is a rather large extension of, of that, but, but is, is helping the redundancy of our power system to get power to and from and through.
I have a question for Rita. Come on back, please. So you have made adjustments because of feasibility, because of things in the way, physical presence, things in a way of the power line. You've moved things around, you moved your line around, correct? As you walk through with each of these landowners, if they point out something you did not know of that causes, causes a feasibility problem, is it on the table to move the power line?
Yeah, to the extent possible, of course. So I've seen lines that will, you know, a landowner may have their, their home on the front end of their farm and instead of having the line go in front of them, they'll, they'll ask the power company to bump out around and back. I'm not saying that's something that will happen on this one, but there, there's lots of things that can be done at the micro siding level in conversations with landowners to accommodate the requests.
Okay.
I mean, we can't, if it's like go to the other side of, you know, Utah County, that's something different.
No, I, I, no, that's kidding. I'm, I mean, you're, you're a pretty high level from an analysis standpoint today. You're going to get more granular as you move forward through the project. You're going to find things that could potentially influence the outcome of the preferred alternative. And you're, you're telling us today that that is still a potential?
At the micro siding level, this is the preferred route that we.
You're going to go this way? This is the preferred route?
This is the preferred route that we'll be pursuing in our permit applications. But on the, you know, as we do our easement acquisitions with pole, pole placements, you know, accommodating wells, like I mentioned earlier, for wells that need to be maintained with, you know, vertical equipment, that type of thing. Those are things that we can accommodate for landowners.
So where you are, when you, through this line are inside our city limits, you, you go through the permitting process with us? When it's Utah County, you're going through a Utah County permitting process?
Yes, sir, in Genoa.
If you're standing underneath these lines, can you hear them? Can you hear the buzz?
It depends on what's happening that day. If it's, you know, wet and foggy out, it's called Corona, that makes them crackle because of debris on the line or a dust storm, that type of thing. They're not silent all of the time, but it depends on what's happening in the atmosphere.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's existing lines all over the place that if, you know, they're going to be similar type loading. You know, if you just go stand outside of our Spanish Fork Substation on any of those trails over there where we've got 138, 345 coming in, you know, like KV lines there, that's going to be kind of what it would, it would sound like, so.
Is it 34 KV that runs through legacy farms?
Yeah, so this is, there are two lines there. You've got a 138, the smaller line, and then you've got a 345, the larger line there. So exactly what they're talking about, the bigger, the bigger of those two is what they're talking about for this project. And we have a trail that runs underneath and that and, and we've got on both ends, I guess, on the east end by the substation and then kind of on our western, or south, south and western border of the legacy farms area.
Yeah, no way, I mean, this is kind of a, a new line, but in no way is this new technology or anything new to anybody here. We just tend to have a, you know, just in our careers, right? We tend to look up, you guys tend to look past, you know, but they're everywhere, right? So I just, if you ever have, you know, a thought or question or just a time when you're walking through the park or walking along these trails, you know, just take a look and listen.
One, one thought, as you interact with landowners, as, as we've had development that occurs, a challenge for the developments have been access permitting underneath. And, and so it's one thing, I think, if, if you own, which you're not going to pursue ownership here, right? And so you just have easements, but in as much as you can maybe assure or give confidence to the landowners that they will be able to have roads that pass underneath it. I think that's something that could assuage some of their concerns. Obviously, you know, today as I might be farming it, but in the future, if I do develop it, that I can have some roads traverse and that future easements, future development potential can be at least realized through that rather than maybe coming into a challenge of, you know, no access this way, you can't go underneath it.
And we're performing, or we're pursuing, you know, non-exclusive easements and so others can be in there with us. You know, within, you know, kind of, I won't say reason, but I'm failing to find that, that right word. But, you know, it's, we've got our limitations that are going to be outlined in those easements and that's for, for their safety and our safety to be able to maintain and access our, our equipment and our facilities. But yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, and it is a, it is an easement, it's, it's the property owner's land. We're just having a right to, to be there.
To do what you do, perfect. I think it would be helpful to identify, you, you showed on the map and maybe the largest focus area was kind of the, the Western Benjamin Interchange. But there is one other area that is in the Spanish Fork boundary today. That's going to be kind of at the front end of this project area, yeah, up there on the mountainside. It almost, the, the preferred route almost goes up and around our boundary as a city, but not quite. It doesn't nip the, the top portion of, of the city's boundary up there. But for that location and mostly that Benjamin area, that Leland area, and then maybe, maybe on the corner by Woodland Hills Drive, I think you're in.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can see where it comes out of the River Bottoms and, and would be in our jurisdiction. In that area, I can't remember what side of the road you're going to be on.
We're on the.
South side, I thought.
No, yeah, we're staying on the east side and then the north side. We made that, that was another change that we made, that this is too steep to be on this side.
So that is Spanish Fork side?
And the proximity of the properties, so we'll be on the.
That's a Salem subdivision, yeah, that's the property, that's the boundary between Spanish Fork. Spanish Fork is on the east side.
So yeah, that, that area is a large run that's in Spanish Fork or proximate to Spanish Fork boundary. Everything else is outside of it today, but that little snippet, as you can see right above the reservoir.
Over here.
Correct.
Yep.
Because you go around, you go around the city right there. I don't know that you're in the city limits.
Over here?
Yeah.
This is Mapleton.
Right, that's Mapleton.
I want to go back to Mayor's question before we let you go. This is the longest 15 minutes of your lives.
No, it's not.
This is probably one of the easiest meetings to have.
You're good.
This is a challenge, this is, these are tough ones, I can't, I don't envy you all at all. On 164, if, if UDOT didn't have a problem putting it in the middle, would Pacific Corp or Rocky Mountain put it in the middle?
Not likely.
So it's, it's a, it's a cost problem at that point?
No.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, it's, there's a cost aspect to it, but it's not cost inclusive. You know, anytime that you're working 130 feet up in the air.
Sure, I'll close the road anytime you want to.
You have to close the road.
I'll close the road anytime you want to.
Just for anything falling down, right? Like, and if, if we lose a, you know, anything out of the bucket, right? You want to basically protect the public from anything in that area.
Sure, absolutely.
And so like when we're able to do that on the side, you know, obviously it's a little bit easier to, to work with individual landowner, be like, hey, your parking lot, you know, just, we're going to barricade this off for the, you know, the time being. We're going to work in the shoulder, we might be able to close one lane. But, you know, with the, the UDOT expansion over in that area as well, you know, it's going to be a wider shoulder, wider everything. So we can hopefully work with that a little bit easier.
I'll give you two, type two, three barricades, you can close the road anytime you want to. Do you still have a problem with it?
Yeah.
So I, I think we would, just as a cost perspective.
It's a cost problem.
Yeah, just because you have to put the infrastructure in.
It's building it physically there.
You have to widen the road, you have to do everything.
That's what I want to get to, is the bottom line, it's a cost problem to put it in the middle. We can overcome some of the other things. Absolutely right, it's a maintenance problem, don't get me wrong, I'm being a little facetious, but if it comes down to, like, how hard does the council want to push in a direction? Not against you, I, to someone else. Absolutely, it's, it's not, you're not the only game in town here, right? Absolutely.
And just remember the point that the cost goes down to all taxpayers, not just people living right there that want it.
Yep, okay, yep. Just wanted to get, what is the bottom line and it is, is a cost problem? Because it is physically more expensive to widen the road and put in the, the right safety features to make it.
Yeah, and I, I personally met with Region 3 UDOT twice.
Oh, I know what their answer is.
Yeah.
Former permit folks would have said yes to it, current ones, probably not.
I think I know where you're going with that. Yeah, so Boyd Humphreys, talked with him, talked with Phil Peterson as well, and they were both like, yeah.
Yeah, they're not making this call, it's going to be above them, right? So, okay, I just wanted, before we strategize on anything, I want to know what the bottom line is, that it's, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a lot, a lot to do with the cost.
Yeah, they'd have to say yes to the physical location, they have to say yes to closing when you needed it, and then you'd have to pay for it. Okay, deal, thank you.
And here's a non-engineer question in that same area. These roads that, that cross 164, you know, we can go 600 to 800 feet before you get another pole. I imagine you try to put those on intersections, you know, more accessible to you, so.
To span intersections, yep.
Correct, yeah, so you're not, but existing roads, so your, your pole, most of your poles can maybe go in, in, you know, not, they can go at the, the intersection of, not in the road, but the intersection of the corner of where a road meets a road.
Yeah, so anywhere that we know that there is going to be a planned corridor, you know, whether it's a city road, state road, you know, we'll do whatever we can to accommodate where the structure locations are ahead of time. You know, like I-15, for example, that's going to be widened, SR 164 is going to be widened as well. We're going to make sure that we put those poles far enough away outside of the UDOT right-of-way line or I guess the I-15 right-of-way line to where we're not, we're not going to be impacting anything they do in the future with the interchange widening. Yeah, with the information we have.
Sure.
Obviously, we can't see into the future and see things that have not been presented to us, but we'll accommodate where we can.
Any other questions? Rita, Tammy, Richard, Austin, or Dave? Steve had to answer it.
Oh, he's gotten off scot-free so far. He knows your code though, if you want to ask him a code question.
Good.
Okay. Thank you all for, for spending some time with this. Will, there's, does the public have access to your website with this line or is there another?
Absolutely, and if there's, you know, the, I know that the, the the URL is long, but if you just Google Rocky Mountain Power, Spanish Fork to Mercer, it pops right up. And there, every open house, all the open house information that we have presented is on there. As Tammy mentioned, the virtual open house is on there, you can watch it, and there's Q and A in there as well. The, there's an interactive map, as we mentioned, so people can zoom in on wherever they like along the line to see what's, what's happening there. All, all of the information about the project is on that website, it's very thorough.
Well, we've spent enough time on the information here tonight that I think it's wise that, to some connectivity to that from either this meeting or something, a, a quick way for the public to be able to, to get there in a couple of clicks. We don't want to miss information, we want, we want the public to start gathering the right information from what's going on. So.
Twice there.
Real discussions can.
I think Genoa has it linked, don't they? Yeah, Genoa has it linked on their website.
Okay, we can, we can probably get Jack to do that if he can figure out how to plug in laptops.
I think it's mine, but I'm using this for fodder to get a new one for my company, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have him pull up the video and that 10 minutes of dead air, be like, that was just horrible.
Seth, Corey, anything else you want to add from a city's perspective there, or did we cover it with some questions there?
I think you guys asked a lot of great questions. We've had a lot of those conversations, I think, in the meetings that we've had with, with staff through the last, I don't know, 18 months or so, right? And there's been some emotion expressed, there's been some good pushback and, and I think you guys asked a lot of similar questions, I think, that you'd heard from us, so I think it was really productive that way. And I, these guys have been consistent and I think in terms of their approach and their messaging, and I think if residents have questions, this seems like the team. Like, these are the guys, they know what they're talking about and they have the ability to address issues. So is that fair to say, like, talk to these guys? They, they, they're in it right now and, and they're, they're good to tackle or take on those issues, so appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you again for coming to Spanish Fork Council Meeting and answering our questions, appreciate it. Takes us to item eight on the agenda, we have one consent items, it's just the minutes from the council, last council meeting that I wasn't at, so I'm not going to make that motion, I wouldn't anyway, but you guys did great.
I go ahead and move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilman Euler, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to the new business section of our agenda tonight, items A through G. I think they, did they all stay on? We're not pulling any of those, we'll just get to, get through them one, one after the other tonight. The first one is an appointment of Nikki Smith to the Historic Preservation Commission. I guess we have a write-up there, Councilman Euler, do you want to read that?
And I think it's fair to say Nikki's here in the audience, she's been here. She's one of our few appoint, appointees that's actually come to a meeting and, for staying this whole time, we might need to pull her up.
Might need to pull her up.
Give her an award or something.
Yep, yep.
Nikki, do you mind coming up to the?
I think I just got the stink eye, so maybe not, maybe don't take her.
So, yeah, we, we recently had two committee members that their time concluded and, and one chose to step down. So we've been looking for some replacements, we're excited Nikki to have you. Maybe if you just take a minute to, one, tell us a little bit about yourself and two, why you want to and are willing to serve on the Historic Commission?
Sure, and Charles Henry Hales brought his family here to Spanish Fork in 1859. He and his wife Julia and his wife Frances raised 24 children to adulthood in Spanish Fork. Many of them remained in Spanish Fork or they were surrounding communities and raised their families there. Here, I am one of those descendants. In the late 1880s, Charles built a home for his wife Julia that still stands on 8th North. That home, from the time it was built until 2009, remained with descendants of the Hales family, specifically my family. My grandparent, my grandmother spent her early childhood there and later with her husband Sidney Hayward and my grandma Grace Mortu Hayward, raised, purchased the home in the 1940s and raised my dad and his siblings there. I was raised down in Benjamin, graduated 1990 from Spanish Fork. My husband and I came back to Spanish Fork 26 years ago this month. We've raised our five children here and they are the sixth generation to have completed their public school education from Spanish Fork High, or Spanish Fork Schools. And by profession, I am an accredited genealogist. I am one of those children who, when everyone was told to leave the room, I was the one that snuck back in and hid behind the couch to hear the stories. I am the keeper of the journals, the keeper of the, the, the things. I am the keeper of the journals, the keeper of the, the things. And Charles served the community by being a board member for the Spanish Fork Co-op. And for several years was a council member on this Spanish Fork City Council. And I am extremely honored and thrilled and excited to preserve and share this really rich and really varied history of Spanish Fork. From the earliest to all of these new kids that are coming up through. So.
As long as you don't share the history from 1988 to 1990.
Oh, we need that.
We're good. Scrub that.
We need that well documented. Thank you, thank you.
If she is the keeper of stories, like, we could use a few.
Yeah, we're good.
Right? Yeah, Nikki, thank you, we're, we're very excited to have you on the commission. Look forward to the insights, the vision, the whatever it is that you are willing to bring to our commission. I'm excited to have you. And with that, I move to appoint Nikki Smith to the Historic Preservation Commission.
I would definitely second that.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote here, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Carries. Nikki, you are overqualified for that position. Thank you for volunteering for your community.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. We'll give you a round of applause for serving. Thank you, Nikki.
If we haven't already, we will be in contact. Tara, I'm sure will, will reach out and let you know when our meetings are, and excited to have you there.
Okay, takes us to item B of new business memorandum of understanding between SFCN and the Nebo School District regarding fiber connections, fiber huts, and IP addresses. Mr. Vaughn Pecel.
Mayor and Council, this agreement between the school district and the city is basically an exchange of about sixty-one hundred IP addresses that the city would lease from the school district. And in return, the city would provide fiber connections to their, their schools and the other district properties that they have. There is also the addition of, we have a fiber hut that is on the, on Park Elementary's grounds, and they would allow us to do that as well. So there's value running back and forth between the two parties, but no dollars changing hands.
Questions for Vaughn on this?
Makes a lot of sense.
This is good government, right?
Yeah, and, and just maybe to add, this is something that we started with the Nebo School District at the beginning of this project, you know, around the year 2000. And this has been, we've been doing this, but we've never had a formal agreement. That's not true. We've had some lease, we've had the lease IP address leases, but none of this other stuff that we were doing and trading back and forth. And, and it became really clear that we're not telling the whole story, and we're not sharing the good news, right? That this project is a community network, and that the schools, our residents as they are students, our residents as their teachers, et cetera, they're all benefiting from this, not just, you know, maybe at a home. And so this is a, this is really a neat, a neat thing. And we're so grateful for the Nebo School District as they recognize this from the beginning. In some of our conversations, Superintendent Nielsen said he remembered having conversations with his father-in-law that was a superintendent.
That's right.
In the late 90s. And his recollection was, well, I remember sitting in those meetings, and the city said, this is going to be just the same for schools, right? This exact idea back in the 90s. And I'm sure his voice probably sounded just like that.
Yeah.
And that made me so happy that, that that idea is exactly what we have done and exactly what we're continuing. And so anyways, just kind of some fun color to what this is.
Yeah, scroll through that agreement, see all the schools that are connected to fiber and probably...
And they have been for twenty years.
As I was going to say, long before any other school was probably connected to fiber, right? So pretty cool stuff.
They went from fifty-six K to fiber. Who else did that?
Okay, if there's no other questions for Vaughn on this, I'd entertain a motion for item B.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between SFCN and the Nebo School District regarding fiber connections, fiber huts, and IP addresses.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote here, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Nick, glad you had to mention this, I'm sure he's not watching at all, he's on vacation, but Councilman Carden is not here, so we're not calling on him tonight. Because he's on a well-deserved family vacation, we'll get him next time when he's back. Mr. David Anderson, item C, annexation acceptance for the Ray Allen Swinson annexation.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, the subject property in this case is, on the north end of Spanish Fork, you can see the runway in this image. So if the runway were to continue further to the northwest, it would hit the subject property sixty-five acres. The Ray Allen Swinson annexation, this annexation is proposed by petition. So the action that's before the council tonight simply is to accept the petition for further study. That would set some things in motion that likely would have it back on a council agenda sometime in September. For action after a public hearing would be held, and after a few things would be done by staff, including to advise certain affected entities of the proposal. They'd be given an opportunity to protest, we'd document all of that. And it would be, again, presented to the city council, I imagine, sometime in September. The applicants are proposing to have the property annexed with residential zoning, they don't have any specific development plans in mind now. But I do understand that the family that owns the property is working with folks that potentially would like to see the, or the portions at least of the subject property develop industrially, which syncs up with the most recent conversations we've had about land use in the area. So the Development Review Committee has discussed this proposal and has recommended that the Ray Allen Swinson annexation proposal be accepted for further study.
Questions for Dave on this property?
Well, Dave, do you think you'll come back after the study with a zone recommendation then? Or?
That's a really good question. I... It's probably my preference, my preference in a case like this. Understanding what I think the vision is relative to what the general plan designation for the property would be, to have it zoned industrial, just right.
This was not rocket science at the end of this runway, right?
Right.
Not a lot of residents?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But there also are some good reasons probably to withhold zoning. So that will be discussed.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dave?
Nope.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion on item C.
I move to approve, propose Ray Allen Swinson annexation for further study based on the findings that are contained in the staff report.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall with the findings, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item C is approved, takes us to D, resolution to express intent to approve the Stewart Farms annexation. Other side of the city?
Exactly, yeah, so moving now, skip through a few things here, all the way over to other side of the city. Subject property in this case is, I benefit here, speaking broadly, due east by a little less than a mile of the neighborhood Walmart on the north side of Highway Six there. The Quiet Valley Development is to the southeast of the subject property, right over here. Just about forty acres here in the Stewart Farm annexation. Incidentally, this proposed annexation is just south of another annexation, the Maple, excuse me, Maple View Farm annexation. Both of which are on your agenda tonight, the Maple View Farm is the next item on the agenda. They are proposed to be annexed by resolution, so the specific action on your agenda tonight for each of these two is to approve the resolution to express intent to annex each of these two annexations. Give the council a little bit of an update, and I really appreciate Mr. Stewart and Mr. Nielsen taking some time to meet with me. After the work session, we were able to talk through some things that previously I had not been able to discuss with them. Had insight from the conversation that we had had about this area. And the fact that these two different annexations are both part of, actually that image there does a good job of, of showing the island, the island of unincorporated Utah County land that exists here. Everything that's shown with the shading, that color, those are properties that have already been annexed in Spanish Fork. And then everything on the other side of these railroad tracks, as I understand, has been annexed into Mapleton. So all of this, and only all of that, remains in Utah County. And kind of summarize what we talked about, and how that influences what I think is best to talk about with the council. It's what I spoke with the property owners about earlier, by way of a path forward that's a little bit different than what we talked about in your work session. It all has to do with, how do we resolve the existence of this island? And simply have all of that area come into Spanish Fork sooner than later, like now, with an annexation proposal, or maybe two. So, in fact, I'm just going to put it out there as quickly as I can. We are recommending tonight, and I'm going to ask Mr. Pecel to correct me if I get off track or if I get this wrong. So speaking first about the next item on the agenda, the Maple View Farm annexation, which includes all of this area here. We're recommending that the council go ahead and approve the resolution, again, to express intent to annex that area. And we are asking the council to continue the Stewart Farm annexation, which is this agenda item, the first one. And the continuance of the Stewart Farm annexation would be done with the expectation that that annexation proposal be expanded to include the Girl School. I say the Girl School. Properties here, there are three different parcels on which reside, still called New Haven.
New Haven.
New Haven Residential Treatment Facility. Sometimes we just call it the Girl School. It's a pretty lazy way to put it. But, so again, we're recommending tonight that this annexation of what's outlined in yellow there, the Stewart Farm annexation be continued. Our expectation would then be to bring back an updated resolution with an updated annexation proposal. I see no reason why that wouldn't land on your agenda in two weeks, on the fifteenth. We were able to talk through, and I really appreciate Mr. Nielsen and Mr. Stewart taking the time to talk some things through in the foyer. I really, really appreciate Mr. Pecel sharing his insight and counsel with us. This situation's a little bit unique from some of the details that we discussed earlier in that because the, the New Haven facility is currently receiving a Spanish Fork City utility. They are a water customer of Spanish Fork and have been since 2010. So that changes how we can operate, given specific provision in the state code. So they can be, I'm going to use the phrase that we're trying to avoid.
Welcomed.
They can be welcomed.
Welcome into our community.
Better said, okay, yeah, they can be welcomed into the community, whether they want to be welcomed to the community or not. As part of the bigger annexation, just because of some thresholds that are met by way of area or value. And Mr. Stewart, I really appreciate your willingness to work with us on that. For that matter, Mr. Nielsen as well. We, we discussed initially at length the route I kind of felt like we were likely going to take based on my read of the conversation we had earlier, which would be to kind of go back to square one and have one annexation proposal made, and have it all brought in by petition. And if the council happens to be comfortable with what I'm talking about, I really appreciate that. Because the process that I'm describing here, it's efficient to the tune of probably a month for the applicants in terms of the time that it takes them to go start to finish on the annexation. And I know that there is a very time-sensitive issue that one of the applicants here is working through. So we're trying to be as accommodating as we can of that while making sure that this issue gets resolved, hopefully in a way that's satisfactory to the city council. Can I answer any questions? Yeah.
You mentioned if we table this for next time, it's going to come back as a resolution and not a petition.
We can do it by resolution, I see no reason not to.
Because of the change in the utility service, it allows us to do it that way, which is different information than we would have given you just earlier.
Earlier, okay. So the, the risk, I like the plan. I think it, it does, it's more efficient, it gets us through the process quicker. The risk is, we can't do it two months or two weeks from now. And I would say no, because we leave a hole. So if we're comfortable that the next proposal through resolution incorporates both, all of it, and that's, that is a legal path forward, I don't see a problem with it. But...
Yes, you can annex by resolution, or start the process by resolution because of the services being provided. And there's enough meat on that bone left that it can be included. You have to have at least half the land area and half, and half the value of private property.
Which that would be.
So it clearly meets the area. And so, oh, excuse me, to be able to protest, so if somebody wants to protest, they have to have half the area and half the value.
Both of those things.
Not either?
And there are multiple parcels in the island that we're talking about, it's not, it's not just one parcel.
Yeah, so the, the petition that, or the resolution that we would do would be for the southern portion of that, including the Yellow Square and the three parcels to the west of the Yellow Square.
Okay.
And that would be, the Yellow Square itself is a majority of the area.
So it's an and, not an or?
It's an and.
Okay, all right.
For an objection.
All right.
And I think that builds on what I was trying to convey in the meeting earlier, is that the state's policy is to disfavor islands and peninsulas. They want to have boundaries that make sense for utility service, for emergency response, for addressing all kinds of concerns.
There is, in my opinion, no way that that remaining parcel should be in Utah County. That is not Utah County, that's Spanish Fork City. And we need to serve it as Spanish Fork City, so I'm comfortable moving forward that way.
Pretty good?
And as I understand it, just to, you know, maybe this is obvious, but should the council initiate the annexation by resolution, they're not obligated ultimately to approve the annexation down the road, so.
Statute's clear, it says the council may ultimately approve it, they don't have to.
Well, this is a two-week pause.
For one part of it.
For half of it.
And it would allow the other part of it, yeah, half, to move forward.
So we would just table this for now?
That's my proposal. I apologize that it is kind of coming in this fashion, but it's been, I think a really healthy conversation that we've had, so.
Okay.
Stewart's the north, Maple View is the south.
Stewart's is the...
Flip?
Yep.
Okay.
So the first item on the agenda, I think, is the Stewart Farm one.
The south one.
South one, okay.
I'd ask that you continue that.
Continue, not table?
I don't think it matters.
All right.
I think we debated this once.
I'd entertain a motion.
I move to table the intent to approve the Stewart Farms annexation.
Until the next meeting?
Until the next meeting.
I think that's appropriate, that's the plan.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote here, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item D is tabled, takes us to E. Any more discussion we need about that?
If you have questions.
How rude is it if I say no now?
I move to approve the resolution to express intent to annex the Maple View Farm annexation based on the findings in the staff report.
Motion made by Councilman Euler to include the findings.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item E is approved, thank you both for working with the timeline there. Takes us to item F, under new... Takes us to item F, under new business, Spanish Fork Airport Landing Fee Contract with Vector Airport Systems.
Well, as we've discussed.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Neilsen.
With the budget, some of the new fees at the airport are landing fees. So, knowing that was coming, we issued an RFP for contractors to help facilitate landing fees. We had two companies submit on that. We had a selection committee that Councilman Cardon, one of our airport board members, myself and Christian, attended and selected Vector. Vector's got a long history in collecting and airport fees. They have a great system that they maintain and issue bills. How this will work is they'll identify aircraft landing, they will send invoices, and they keep a portion of those proceeds and send the rest to Spanish Fork City. Some of the benefits of this is they kind of fed into this slow. Year one, they would have a five percent that they would charge, year two, ten, and then year three plus, they've committed to fifteen percent. One of the other benefits we saw was upfront equipment. They would just provide without charging the airport for them. And they would also push off maintenance fees for the first three years and then pretty minimal fees after that. So, as a selection committee, the recommendation was to enter this contract. It's a three-year contract and then could be extended beyond there if it's mutually agreeable, so.
And that's what we're coming up against now? It was three, three years and the three years is coming up?
No. This is year one, as soon as we sign this, it starts the three-year getting into this.
We didn't have a, we didn't have any landing fees.
Review of this. They'll install, their proposal includes six cameras that would identify towing numbers and they have a good database to identify who the owners of those are. And they would invoice and do collections on those landing fees.
You may not know this, but I'm just curious, does this, the data they collect? I know there's a real challenge in collecting taxes from plane owners. Does this data make its way back into the Utah State collection system at all, do you know?
I'm not aware. I can ask that question, I'm not sure on the tax side.
Going from, but, cool, never mind. Was this procured as a cause-based or quality and fee cost?
Both.
It was both?
Yeah, just, there was different percentages applied to things like experience.
Okay. And cost was one of those?
Cost was one of those. Just a comparison on the costs, the other company ultimately held about ten percent of it, where Vector will end up at fifteen. But the upfront cost to install cameras would have been pretty significant for the airport that doesn't have a lot of funds for that right now, and maintenance fees would have started year one. And so, certainly in this first three years, this Vector contract is significantly lower as far as cash out of pocket to Spanish Fork.
Cory, hey Cory, if we don't like working with them after three years and want to change it up, is that in the contract that we could use to try something else, or is it?
Yes, and there's also language in there of timelines. If, if there's problems, so many days written notice, we can sever that contract and such.
Cory, there are a lot of helicopter schools as well. Does this only apply to the, to the runway, or does this apply as well to helicopter landings?
It does apply. In fact, one of the, a few of the camera areas that Vector is proposing are at those landing pads for helicopters. So, this would capture that traffic.
Yeah, because they're using, yeah, they're in the air as well, using up our airspace, so.
Yeah, and the idea is those who are using the facilities and the asphalt and the maintenance that comes with that should pay a proportionate share of that.
Great, thank you. Any more questions for Cory on this contract? You did mention Councilman Cardon, so if it goes south and Councilman Cardon's not here, we can blame him.
Yep.
We call him, have him make a motion just to make it so the file.
If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the Spanish Fork Airport Landing Fee Contract with Vector Airport Systems.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, second by Councilman Euler, a roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
F is approved, takes us to G Cemetery Reclamation Resolution. It's the guy that.
We have a chance for Mike to break ties tonight. We should find one of these things so he can vote.
This one.
This is it.
He's had a break of ties recently.
This is Dale that takes care of us on that.
You guys doing okay?
Front end of our lives.
Hey, we're almost there. Last leg of the race, the most important. The resolution that you have before you allows the cemetery, it'll actually initially, initiate the process for us to be able to reclaim unused cemetery plots. Joshua and Vaughn have helped us put together this resolution. According to following state law, the basic crux of the resolution is, we're testing this on lot, on, on area number eight. There's twenty-six vacant lots there. So, if you go throughout our entire cemetery, you can see how many lots that would add up to. But Justin, our cemetery section, has done a lot of work in getting this put together and figuring out how to go through this process. So, we have twenty-six sites, lots, that are currently on a list that we're going to post if this resolution is passed. These are lots that have to have not, they were purchased and not used for a burial for sixty years, six-zero. So, then we can, then we can move, move forward with this process. The first process is, if this resolution is passed, is to put a notification out with all of those, right? Who the owner was sixty years ago and to give, to give ancestors, people from these people, an opportunity to, to come forward and possibly claim the lots. Our whole purpose is to either use them, have somebody use them in the family, family tree, or to give them back to Spanish Fork City so we can resell them and utilize them. You can imagine if you go throughout our whole cemetery and you have twenty-six, that many in every single block, we could prolong the, the need for additional land for cemetery for some time. So, that's our intent with the resolution. I don't know if you have any questions, we kind of have gone over this before, but.
Where will they be noticed when, when that process takes place?
They'll go through all our normal channels of communication. They'll, they'll post them on the internet. I don't know what the law says, Vaughn or Vaughn. Wow, I'm the one that's tired and I haven't even done anything. The public notice website, there you go.
And I think the feedback I got from our work session discussion on this last, maybe the last council meeting was whatever we're supposed to do, let's do a little bit more. Is that fair to say?
Yep.
So, we can, we can put that out in a few places additionally. I don't know that there are more places necessarily to put it out, but we can do it a few more times and not just simply check boxes to ensure that we're, we're getting the word out. Anecdotally, was it you, Tara, you and me were talking to somebody and they had a last name that was on there? And we, like, hey, do you, is this your great-great-grandpa?
Might be your ancestor.
And they didn't know. And they were gonna check it out.
Promote some genealogy.
I think it was a Bowen, yeah, I think it was one of the Bowen last names that was on there and.
Are you asking for family trees when you ask for proof of ancestry?
In the staff report, it says thirty days after notice, and in the notice, it says sixty days after notice, which is it?
The law is thirty.
Is it thirty?
Yeah.
So, you need to change the public notice to thirty days after. I would like to have a report back thirty-one days after you post this, just to see how this process goes. I think it's, it's super sensitive, right? I mean, this is.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, this is a tough time for everyone in their life and so, but I think it's something the city has to go through. We just, we can't let unclaimed sites go. So, we have to do it, we should do it. I'd love to see how, what the process looks like and just, just touch base with us back, just back base, just.
Report.
Totally understood.
We'll do it.
He said, thank you.
We will force a report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, this is.
You can force that all day, and I will welcome it.
Okay. For sure. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dale. We're getting tight up there and.
Yeah, we are.
Every space we can find is better.
We are.
No other questions, I'd entertain a motion on item G.
I move to approve the Cemetery Reclamation Resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, second by Councilman Euler, roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
G is approved. Takes us to item ten. We have one discussion item tonight, the West Meadows Concept Review. I'm gonna lean on Dave a little bit here and Seth. I think we were trying to come up with, only done a couple of these, so this would be like number three or something.
Maybe two, yeah.
Yeah, so I can't remember if it was fifteen minutes for the applicant and then ten-minute discussion up here, or ten minutes, fifteen? I know it kind of mingles because we start asking questions.
Yeah.
But not a public hearing, so we'll hear from Dave and we'll hear from the applicant about the concept review. But we'll try to keep a timer to it as well, like we did. I think it was fifteen, was it ten and fifteen or?
Yeah, I think, I think we had just fifteen minutes. It's up to you guys, it's helpful to.
Five and ten.
Yeah, it's helpful to at least focus the conversation, otherwise you could probably be.
Mine'd been fifteen minutes total, five and ten, does that sound right?
It may be.
Wow, it was longer than that. Two and a half and ten.
Two and a half and ten.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ten and fifteen up here. We'll try to keep our questions and discussion till, to fifteen and see if, see if the applicant can help.
And you don't have to go the whole time like Mr. Pryor, right? Three more seconds, I'm gonna go.
Oh, I got thirty more seconds.
I'm definitely looking up and waiting until there's three seconds.
Thirty seconds and then he says he got three seconds, I got three seconds.
It's awesome.
Use it up. David, sorry.
This is eight thousand south, trying to start to call it more often, nineteen hundred south. This is the Spanish Fork coordinate, but that's the Salem Benjamin interchange, it's I-15. This is Lofer Mountain Parkway, that right now just extends south from nineteen hundred south, but is planned to extend to the north. You might recall when the subject property was recently annexed, we talked about Utah County's desire to work with the property owners and our regional transportation planning folks to accommodate the purchase by Utah County of the right of way that's needed for the eventual extension of Lofer Mountain Parkway. I think as much as anything, and I'll let the applicants just speak for themselves and correct me where I'm wrong, but with what you can see here, this northern part of the concept is residential. To the south, it's commercial. And really, from my perspective, that's the question. It's that high level because currently, our general plan is set up in such a way to suggest that along the state highway to the south, eight thousand south, I'll call it, Spanish Fork for a long time has intended to have commercial development and has expected that that development would transition from maybe retail kind of nature to maybe some kind of mixed use, maybe professional office, retail, maybe even some residential, and then even exclusively residential development up on the north end. We've had a number of conversations about general plan map for the area, and it's a little bit different from what, at least the draft map, different from what the current map is, where the thought has been along Lofer Mountain Parkway to have those properties designated commercial. So, I think that's, the, the timing of this conversation certainly has influenced why the applicants want airtime tonight. And again, you know, I don't want to tell you what level of detail to get into with what's proposed, but I will just provide this as another description of what the applicants are proposing. It's a residential development with a combination of, I'd call it side-by-side kind of multifamily units and some stacked flat type of housing products. And you do have a copy of the draft minutes from the Development Review Committee where we discussed this, I think, just last week. But otherwise, we really haven't had a lot of conversations in any kind of a detailed fashion at the staff level with the applicants about the subject property here, so. Don't have any questions for me?
Questions for Dave for the applicant.
You're welcome to use this.
Yeah.
Forward.
So, did you say two and a half minutes, Cap?
Forward.
Two and a half.
Got it.
Jack, do you want to put up the timer?
Two and a half, these guys keep talking.
Why do I have a timer? Rocky Mountain Power had a seven-hour timer.
Yeah, ten, ten minutes here.
It's dead.
Yeah, ten minutes here.
Okay, I don't, I don't think I'll even need a full ten. I mean, you guys saw, oops, am I clicking the timer? Can you go back to the other one so I can click front and back?
I'm gonna get rid of the timer, I'll tell you.
Well, anyways, you saw the first general plan, which was, there we go. The commercial in the front, the high-density and then the medium-density housing components and some mixed use in the back. So, we came in, first was with the Timson family, then we expanded to the RFM, which is the piece next door, then Rod Christiansen family, and then we ended up purchasing two more pieces. So, we're into this a lot at this point, and we brought a concept that matched exactly what the city had planned. And so, from there, to get the next concept, that, which let me put into scale for you really quickly. I think this will be helpful. Just the triangle, if you include Rex Larson's piece and Thomas, is seventy-seven acres. Seventy-seven acres of commercial retail is all of Costco and the surrounding retail, all of Macy's and the surrounding retail, all of Cal Ranch and the surrounding retail, all of the old ShopCo building and the surrounding retail, all of it. That's seventy-seven acres of retail. And that's what's being said here, and then you've got even more across the street, more across the street on Kirk Christiansen's property. It's just a crazy, crazy ask. I get it, I get it that the road goes there and it's kind of trapped in between and it makes sense, but we, it's not feasible. So, we already have actually under contract both of those items. One of them is, is a tenant that's elsewhere in the city that we're keeping in the city, a really high-tax revenue tenant. And then the housing was the other thing we could do that could move now, right? Because when it comes to pulling the infrastructure down that corridor, nobody else is moving. So, in order for us to move now, we cannot have forty years' worth of commercial that we're just sitting on. Now, we're gonna try our best, we're gonna do the best we can. And I wanted to speak up like Kevin during the Rocky Mountain Power. We had a bigger user that left because of that power line. So, we're, we got the next biggest user and it's still really big. I think we got really lucky with that commercial tenant that we have. But yeah, that is a massive, massive ask on the retail side, and it would, it would just kill everything. So, we followed the plan, I think there's something to be said for that. And yeah, the new commercial is just, that's a lot. I don't think you realize the scope that that is. It's just the triangle is seventy, you add in the career stuff, that's probably a hundred. And then you go to Kirk Christiansen's, probably another twenty. It's crazy amounts of retail, so we need the mixed-use aspect in there, and Tate's got something.
Yeah, I'd just like to, Tate Murphy, I'd like to add, when you include the Salem's commercial, you're actually twenty percent more commercial in this area designated in general plan than all of the other portion of Canyon Creek from Lowe's all the way to ShopCo. I mean, and if you think about how long that, that took to expand, I mean, we're talking, and, and some of it's still sitting vacant up there. So, it, it's just immense, I mean, from a map perspective, when there's as much farmland. it's hard to see the scale, but to see that there's twenty percent more retail planned for this area with this general plan kind of starts to see how much you'd actually need. And then you think about what they're doing at that new pace next exit and what that's gonna take, and all of a sudden, there's not enough users to really justify it.
Yeah.
And are you referring just to the red, the commercial right there, when you're saying twenty percent more than over in Canyon Creek?
So he's talking about that and then across the street in Salem as well. So all of that and on the west side.
Oh, and in...
Yeah, it's more, it's like basically more commercial retail than exists, right? It is so much. And so we're not saying none. We're trying to do as much as we can with the power line hindrance and everything else, but it's, you need some mixed use. You need some people out there. You need affordable housing next to freeway on and off ramps. It's a great place for it. So that's, that's what we're trying to do there before this gets adopted and is just impossible. But yeah, that's, that's where we're coming from, and that's why I want to get in front of you soon and say, hold on a minute, and let's, let's be reasonable here. So whatever questions you have for me.
Let's go back to your, your development. Walk us through this then. Your commercial is the white section.
Yeah, the commercial is the white section, and like I said, we had a former user that went all the way up to the corner where Rex's piece cuts in there. When that power line came through, they say it doesn't affect the land that much. I wanted to yell, but I knew I had to wait till a public hearing.
At least one of you did.
But all of the out parcel tenants won't come under the power line. So even this car dealership developer was gonna add some more, but they, because they got, have to sit so far back off that main road, they're not gonna do it. And so it hurts a lot. And so we're doing the best we can, given the circumstances. It was hard to find any kind of tenant that would come without having the out parcels available. And like I said, I feel like we got lucky to get a really great tenant. It's gonna be great for the city. But in order to actually get them and get utilities to them, we have to have a project we can do and not just do their little piece and wait who knows how long for the rest of it.
Those were commercial projects that backed out?
From the power line, yeah.
So wouldn't that make more sense than if the power line's running along, what'd you call it, Dave? It's not eight thousand now, it's?
One sixty-four.
Nineteen.
Nineteen hundred? So if you've got the power lines running along nineteen hundred that are dissuading commercial, wouldn't it make sense then with the new Lofer Mountain Parkway that's gonna go north and cross I fifteen, and it's gonna be a big road as well, wouldn't it make sense then to add commercial along that route where the power lines don't exist?
No, for several reasons. One being, in order to get anything there, we've gotta have stuff we can do. It's gonna take who knows how long for Lofer Mountain Parkway actually to be built. I'd say ten years minimum where it jumps over. The other reason being, that much, that far deep, just takes so long to absorb, and with no houses out there, Modera and Modera West aren't moving anytime soon. I think they're gonna change their whole plan with the power line coming through. Like, there's just nothing to support it. So in order to kick it off, we've gotta do a mixed-use product that works kind of all at once. And so, yeah, and the way the road starts raising up there, it actually becomes a terrible spot for retail because of access issues. And even before, so just this piece has been fun in general, even before this all happened in the power line, UDOT came in and is not giving any left turns into that piece. So it's, it has some, some access issues, so.
At the signal, there's a left turn.
At Lofer Mountain, yes.
But there's no left turn between that and the ramp?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
There won't be.
How far, what's the distance between the ramp and Mount Lofer? Tate knows.
Probably about eighteen hundred.
Okay.
It might be helpful to talk about maybe the merits of what it is you proposed in terms of the layout, the densities, and kind of the products.
I mean, this is a, this is a good mixed-use residential piece where we go high-density, but we tried to keep some mixed components there to not make it feel so blocky and just one type of building everywhere, right? With some, with some nice amenities there that I think it just fits perfectly on a really easy-to-access. You've got freeway on-ramps on both sides of it, kind of keep the traffic there and out of the city. And then the, the retail tenant as well is a huge tax revenue provider for the city. And so, yeah, I think it's a great mix right now. Not saying it's perfect, but it's, it's really, I think we've done a good job with the hand we've been dealt in this area.
Big picture, how many units roughly?
Do you remember off the top of your head, how many's on this one? Yeah, three hundred-ish. It was less, like I said, when we had the former retailer and then they added more. But yeah. Yeah.
Utilities in the area, now we're gonna transition to...
So the utilities are all the way down to the east past the lift station. Most of them, Tate knows better than I do on utilities.
Like Austin mentioned, that's one of the reasons that this development is so hard by itself, right? If it was just the commercial without anything and having to wait ten years for additional commercial behind it, is you need something to support that pull. So PI is all the way down. If, I don't know if we can zoom out to this, but it's all the way down at, what's the road that comes through and comes back up to?
Mill Road.
Mill Road, yeah.
For purposes of this conversation, it's probably easy just to say, there's a, there are ways away.
There, yeah, they're very far, yeah. I mean, obviously, we have to pull from the lift station, which is, you know, just everyone knows where that was pulled in up. Power is also difficult. I mean, we all kind of wanted more to happen in this area than's currently happened, and I think it's because of one person trying to pull utilities. No one has enough scale to do it. We think with this project, we can get this scale to do it, which will really help kickstart the area and help the whole area, and we can pioneer through it.
We'd love some feedback on the design, the layout, the...
Notice how Austin sat down right when the feedback comes?
Yeah.
That was my design, but...
And Kevin left a while ago, so.
He did leave, that's fine.
Yeah, discussion up here of giving him some feedback. They're here with, here with the drawing.
I like the dealership where it is. I'm undecided about residential versus commercial.
I, I'm not.
Let's hear it.
I think there's a reason why, at least there's a reason why I think commercial is needed in this area. Every time I read on social media about the Canyon Creek area, everybody's, not everybody, but you see multiple complaints about, why does the city have all of our commercial in one centralized zone where all the traffic goes to one area? I think it makes sense to try and, and we've done that in other areas. We've got it up by the small mart, the neighborhood Walmart and other areas. I think this being next I fifteen is another ideal location for commercial.
Totally. But do you, I mean, the scale of that seventy acres and how much that is?
I think one difference between yourself and I is that I don't have a sense of urgency to develop this land, probably like you do as the landowner and the developer. If this were to sit vacant for years as we waited for the commercial to get there, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a concern with that. If it's the right zone and the right thing for the city. That's the difference between, obviously, you as the landowner, you want it, you want something there. You want to move forward with your project, and I totally understand that.
What if it lost, you lost the commercial tenant that was available because of it?
Yeah, that would suck.
I mean, because that's kind of what we're, we're up against, right?
Yeah.
Councilman Euler, and for that matter, for Mr. Pritchett, Mr. Murphy, Tate and Austin. The question of scale, that is a very legitimate thing to talk about, and it's very common, it certainly has been for a long time, for cities to over-zone for retail. So I appreciate that from a concerned perspective, but I do want to make a couple of things clear. And Austin, I might have missed how you describe things, so I might just say it a little bit differently to try to be clear. From what was Shopko to Lowe's, the retail uses there comprise two hundred and eighty-five acres. And...
That includes the hospital though, too, right?
It is not. Nope. So what we're talking about here, it is a big area. I agree. It's a hundred and fifteen acres, give or take, on what undoubtedly is not the only part of the interchange that would develop commercially. So a hundred and fifteen, if that were to be replicated on the south side of the interchange, you know, you're, you're well over two hundred at that point. And who's to say what could happen on the west side? I haven't talked to many folks that are optimistic that there's gonna be a lot of non-residential potential on the west side for a lot of reasons. And the last thing that I wanted to point out, we have not had enough room in the Canyon Creek area for at least five years to accommodate everybody that wants to be there. If we had another thirty acres of flat developable land, there'd be a couple of other hundred and fifty thousand square foot big boxes there, certain of it. Probably see them land in a neighboring community because we haven't been able to, to fit them in there. So who's to say what the demand in the future's gonna be? I think a lot of people do feel like everybody's using space more efficiently, so maybe you could squeeze the same amount of commerce into less area, which I think lines up kind of with what these gentlemen are saying. But that's it, you know, less than three hundred acres on the north end, but close to it, a little over a hundred planned down here.
Yeah, so I guess to, to, to kick this area off, I mean, we've gotta do something that works. So what would be your suggestion in a way to work together on that? I mean, you could say you just don't care, which I guess that's an option.
I do care, because that's not fair to you guys. That's not fair to you as, you know, property owners, developers.
I mean, we followed the plan that existed when we purchased the land, right? Almost to a T.
But I do believe the Lofer Mountain Parkway drastically changes, or did change. I don't think our general plan changes to what it is now or what it will be, if not for Lofer Mountain Parkway. And so I really think that's, that's, and I understand you guys brought this, you know, based on what the prior plan was, but that prior plan was ten years ago, ten-plus years ago that that general plan was put in place. And we've been in, in the works at least since, four years ago Shane and I were running for council, and we talked about making changes and adjustments to the general plan, and we're finally getting close to that.
Are you saying a mixed, no mixed use off the table?
I, when I look at even the prior general plan and then the new general plan as to what's gonna be proposed, this, this isn't even meeting in the middle. You've got one commercial lot.
Totally. That's why I'm saying we could be, we could come further to the middle.
And I guess my other comment would be, you know, you say you hear complaints about Canyon Creek because it's all concentrated right there. That's essentially what's being designed, is another Canyon Creek where it's all concentrated in the exact same spot.
But now you've got two options within the city. Right now, we've got...
Yeah, I mean, but more rooftop, I mean, if the retailers come, it's not because...
Which is a great argument that we're gonna need more commercial, is what you're telling me.
I'm just saying, you're basically creating another Canyon Creek, right, of that kind of traffic.
And as a council member and thinking about tax dollars and sales tax revenue, I am not opposed to that.
I completely agree. I just think the pockets idea that you brought up, I mean, that's not, we're not just creating a little pocket here, right? It's creating a...
The difference, though, is you have an interchange, interchanges aren't pockets. You know, neighborhood Walmart, that's a pocket. This is, this is the kind of area where you could have that, that mass.
The potential's there, right? The potential's there. And, and I think if, if, if we didn't have this temporal component of you being first, I don't think you would be arguing for presidential. Because it would make more sense commercially. I think it makes more sense commercially. Your challenge is to pencil this out. How do you do that? How do you do that? And I, I agree with you, Austin and Tate. I, I think this is going to take a significant amount of time to fill up. All right, we have a, we have a commercial property that is sort of a pocket that's up by Maple Mountain that we zone commercial like a twenty-eleven, right? And it's taken, it's, it's now finally to the point where we're gonna hopefully have something up there. It takes a long time. They have the benefit of having utilities and everything run right past their business, and they have the chance to wait. You guys don't. So I, it is, it is a challenge from a economic standpoint. Land use, I agree with Kevin. It makes a ton of sense to have commercial here because we're running out. We just are flat running out. You make a great point. It's not just here, it's across the street, and it's three miles to the south. There's a brand-new interchange that has a ton of commercial development potential, right? Has a school that's gonna go on one side of it, or a university's gonna go on one side of it. Like, it's a ton of commercial. How does this county support that much commercial in this area in the next twenty years? Like, you're staring at a very difficult challenge. Best, best case, this is all commercial. I think that is definitely the case. This is not enough.
That's fair. I don't think that we're opposed to meeting, maybe me less so than Tate, but meeting more in the middle. We tried to get a bigger use, right? We did before the power line came, and this is what we ended with, and we thought, well, if we're gonna try to do this all at once, and maybe it is a case of we get a little, we give what we can, and then maybe some of it sits.
Yeah, I mean, even, even from an access standpoint, if we think ten years from now, I mean, if, the access is still there a little ways deeper before you really start to get the grade, that's where it really starts becoming a really difficult commercial project, even ten years from now, when you're tucked back in that corner, right?
Sure.
And so, I mean, I, I can, I can see the middle too, right? It's like where we can get access in and out of it, and where it makes sense probably ten years from now, you know?
Yeah, the, the access issue is kind of interesting, right? It, on one argument, there is not a good enough access for commercial. On the other argument, there's great access for residential. Like, you're not wrong on either case, right? The, you have great access to the interstate for this residential. I don't want to waste this land for residential. That is, that is fundamentally my, the challenge. But we had the same conversation with the Harrises? Was it the Harrises that were trying to develop? Deep back up into there where...
Further north.
The utility challenges for them is, is real as well, right? How do you, who's the first to get utilities in this area? If they were there, I don't think we'd be having this challenge. I think you could wait, but how, how do you make this pencil? I mean, and, and I don't think Kevin said, I don't care.
Yeah.
Because I think he does care that this doesn't sit forever, but it's, we want to do it right. That's what we care about.
Let me explain a little bit to put yourselves in our shoes as city council members. Every year, we have to balance our budget, right? And every year, there, there are costs and needs within the city that continue to grow. For example, one of them this year that's, that's gone up is our full-time fire and EMS, and that's gonna continue to grow and go up as the city goes up. A lot of those revenues that we get, yeah, we get some from property taxes, but most of our general plan funds come through sales tax, sales tax revenue within our city. I was in a meeting earlier today where they talked about water, water needs in the future, and they showed that in 2060, estimated for just Spanish Fork residents, we're almost at fifty thousand right now. They're estimating a hundred and eighteen thousand residents in Spanish Fork in thirty years. That being said, how do we provide services to all of those residents if we don't have additional sales tax coming in? And so that's why, in my opinion, we need to find areas like this, as much as you may not like it, this is an ideal location next to the interchange for commercial.
We, we agree a hundred percent. I mean, that's what, we tried to find the highest sales tax users we could to offset the fact that, you know, you get just a gas station and some professional office, and, I mean, the user that we're looking at provides more sales tax than if we were to fill that whole area with a lot less superior uses.
But do we sacrifice to bring in one user, sacrifice potential other users?
If your goal is to optimize sales tax potentially, and, and I think the other argument I would make is...
We could make a math case on keeping, like, doing this for that user would probably make as much sense as doing it all commercial. We could do the math.
And I think the, the other thing is, I mean, from a standpoint of the new way of designing, right? Putting retail with, or putting residential with retail, like University Mall with all the apartments and the density, I mean, it, it's actually, you know, it creates less traffic in your community, and putting high pockets of density surrounded by commercial actually creates some strong benefits for the community as well. So, you know, I, I don't think that they have to be completely counter, you know, separated uses, right? That they can blend and actually support each other in a way that the city would, I think, would like.
I think my feedback, I, I am okay with some residential, like, like what you were just saying. I was just picturing like different cities throughout the state, but I would want more commercial. I would want more commercial, so more meeting in the middle.
That's...
Makes sense.
That's fair.
Be my perspective.
That's fair. We, again, we tried until the power line, and this is the best we could do since then, but that doesn't mean we can't keep trying, so.
Mike, you look like you need to say something.
Nope. I think, I, I will say, it comes to mind that I do, uh, sympathize and empathize the same thing when we're talking about the general plan, because it probably lines up with the current general plan that hasn't been adjusted yet, pretty close to the T of what we envisioned happening off, off an exit here and trying to get commercial. And you're, you're trying to get commercial on what you control and what you do, and so I don't think it should be lost on us, and I, I think you've communicated that well, that showing one map and then a map that's probably gonna change with the input that we've, but here you are, the owners of the property, that have been owners of the property for a bit now, and, and trying to work under what's the current plan, too, and, and then it leads into, yes, that's, that road to get built, you'd know this better than I would, but to extend Mount Lofer Parkway to get across a freeway, holy cow. I mean, the things we're...
The, the, the number of users you need on the west side of the freeway to make that happen?
Yeah.
Are a very long way away.
Long ways away. And then that number of what that is, I, I mean, the, the numbers we're fighting over to get things on other exits that are, that are needed, and they're all, every single time we talk to someone, it's another hundred million dollars to do something. I mean, I, it just, it, that's where I sympathize with you, too, of, of saying this is gonna be a really good corridor in the future, and that future is a long future out, because it's not just getting it here 'cause, 'cause you built here, it's where that's gotta go on the complete other side of the, the freeway for a long time. I mean, we're fighting a lot of things here, trying to get intersect, or off-ramps and on-ramps improved, flyovers of, of railroads everywhere, and those dollars are just such big dollars that it's, it's tough, it's, you know, I mean, it's tough. The Utah Lake guys talking about the Causeway going over Utah Lake, and that, I guarantee you, MAG and the state and everybody says, "Well, that's a priority before we get to something like this," and those are, those are half a billion dollars, hundreds of billions.
We really appreciate your guys' feedback and openness just to talk about it, and, I mean, like Austin said, we'll figure out what we can do and, and go back to the drawing board on a portion of it, and, and kind of come back with our best foot forward and, and continue to work together like we always do.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, you guys. Yep. I think we have, uh...
Close session.
Close session, is it we?
We do.
Okay. Usually, that's Jesse taking us...
Anyone know how to say the words?
Yeah, to close session, so I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed meeting to discuss the purchase exchange or lease of real property and strategy sessions to discuss pending reasonably imminent litigation. Closed meeting will be held in the Explorer Room.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, a roll call vote here, Councilman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
We're in closed session. Thank you, everybody, for coming, appreciate you being here.